Good evening and welcome to the November 8, 2022 Regular Meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. This is a public meeting, and if any member of the public would like to make a comment on any item, there are several ways. If you're on Zoom, when the public comment period opens, use the raise your hand icon. You will be unmuted when it's your turn. If you are on the phone, you can also join the meeting by commenting and comment by pressing star nine. Again, you will be unmuted when it's your turn to speak. If you are in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. The meeting is now officially called to order, and we will begin with a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local state and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling of the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So David Loyah, can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Chair of Assate Alcock?
Here.
And Vice Chair Davies?
Here.
Is joining us from Zoom. Commissioner Figaro is absent today.
Okay, and at the staff's table, we have Director Loyah, David Loyah, Director of Community Development, and Jennifer Dart, Deputy Director of Community Services. Is there anyone online, or is it just the two of you? Okay. So. Oral Communications, this time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. So anything having to do with the Gateway. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for future agenda or referred to staff. Is there anyone, member of the public, who'd like to speak to something not on tonight's agenda? Please step forward. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise. Since the 10 months or so that I've been here speaking with you, I speak a lot, I don't get a lot of feedback. I like to know if I'm saying something that's incorrect, you're wrong. I would like it brought to my attention. I'd like it to be corrected because that's who I am. Whether it's on my website or in my speaking, if there's something that I'm saying which is not factually true or have a different opinion, I'd like to know about it. For about eight months, I've been telling the planning commission and the city council at different times that there have been what I consider to be irregularities in the procedure in this whole process. It puts the whole process in jeopardy, in my opinion. They can be violations of the Brown Act. They can be what I consider to be misleading or sometimes false. Statements on the city's website or in speaking at this meeting. At our, two weeks ago, the Arcata, the Westwood Garden apartment was approved. I think that there were incorrect statements in the staff report. I don't think, I think it, I'm sure of it. I don't begrudge any member of the planning commission for your actions. I think if I had been in your shoes, I might have done the same thing. At various times, there are three planning commissioners who refer to these project as affordable housing. It's not affordable housing. David Loyah said that it was not affordable in his speaking, but in the staff report, the word affordable is there. There's a variety of other elements that are, that were misleading, I think, in the staff report. The upshot is that a citizens group has filed an appeal with the city council on this project, and it will be at the city council, I think, on the 16th. I support them. Because I don't like to see this kind of thing happen. That they, there's a list of about 20 items that were either misrepresented or actually false. I consider that unfortunate. In terms of the Gateway area or the gateway procedure, I'll talk more about this later, but I don't want the same thing to happen. I don't want it to go to an appeal. I don't want it to go to a court situation or a suit, lawsuit against the city. I've said this many times. It requires much better actions, I feel, on the part of staff to keep things straight. I'm not the only one who's observing this stuff. That's all I have to say. But again, I respect what you're doing, and I'm open to any questions or comments that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Is there anyone else? Any member of the public? Is anyone online?
Not seeing any online.
Okay, so we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the commission and are enacted in one motion. The only thing we've got on here are the regular meeting minutes from October 25th. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve those minutes, or do we need to pull those for any reason?
I'll make a motion to approve October 25th Planning Commission meeting minutes.
I'll second the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, minutes approved. So we are going to move on to our public hearing item. Do any commissioners, we're going to consider a recommendation to the city council on the Gateway area plan. Do any commissioners need to make an ex parte communication or disclosure, communication disclosure? Anything?
City Chair?
Yes.
For order?
Yeah.
A member of the public requests an item to be moved from consent calendar to approval minutes.
Okay. Can you step forward, please?
Briefly, I'm not requesting that the public comment minutes have to necessarily be lengthier, but I would like them to be accurate and accurately express the sentiments of what was said. In my comments, it says, "Comment was made regarding Gateway area plan progress." I'd like to see this changed to, "Comment was made regarding the lack of Gateway area progress and the lack of leadership." Where it says, "A desire to see letters regarding Arcata Gateway Plan on the city's website." I would like to add to this, noted that two letters written to the planning commission were not included on the city's website. And here's a copy of this, if you need this. Thank you.
So Chair, if I may, also as a point of order, the minutes that were on your consent calendar were, the action was taken on them. I don't know that you provided an opportunity for the public to pull items off of the consent calendar. And I don't know if that sentiment was expressed before action was taken, but now that action is taken, it's completed. If the commission wishes to amend the minutes in any way at this point, you would have to have a motion to reconsider the minutes. And if that motion passed, then you could reconsider the minutes and take a second vote on them. I would advise the commission that the minutes are intended to be high-level action minutes. The minutes are not required to even reflect the content, per se, the sentiments that were spoken by the public members, but that public members spoke on certain items. When the commission takes action, the intent is not to, you know, replicate the deliberations, but to provide a quick synopsis of the overall action, whether people spoke and what the, you know, who took the motion, who made the second, and what the final vote was. So your minutes are intended to be fairly straightforward action minutes.
Kimberly, you made the motion. Would you like to amend your motion? What's the pleasure of this?
Yeah, I'm sorry, at this point, you'd have to, you can't amend the motion? At this point, the action is taken. If the commission wants to take this item up again, you all voted in the affirmative, so any one of you could say that you want to reconsider the adoption of the minutes and then take an action on that. If you're gonna, if that passes, then you can take action on amending the minutes, if you wish.
Do we want to reconsider?
I do not want to reconsider the minutes.
No, and I appreciate the staff clarity on the broad goal of the minutes, and I feel comfortable that we're close enough with that goal to leave it as is.
I guess if we only take a minute to reconsider, I'm not sure why we wouldn't. So we could reconsider the minutes to reflect that public comment was confirmed that it was lack of progress on the Gateway area plan? And that's all we need to do?
I don't have any strong feeling about the minutes. I know I've expressed in the past that I appreciate the minutes as fairly skeletal recordings and that the recordings of our meeting in detail are posted for anyone who's interested to see. Once we have a great deal of detail in the minutes that are actually published, it opens up the need to have an equal level of detail on everything in there, which then introduces considerable possibility for bias by the staff person writing the minutes. So I'd like to just remind staff that that has been our practice with minutes in the past. And I'm sympathetic to comments that members of the public feel that their own comments were misrepresented. And so I would be okay modifying this set of minutes to reflect that, since a member of the public did actually come forward and take the trouble to bring that to our attention.
May I just ask, Commissioner Mayor, what part would you amend, if any?
I guess the one comment about changing progress to lack of progress. The other things I believe are not as important, but if a member of the public actually feels that their comment has been misrepresented, that's a significant thing to me.
Okay, what's the next step, David? Do we need to?
So again, if someone who voted in the majority, that's any one of you, wishes to make a motion to reconsider the action you just took, you can take that as a motion. And then if someone's willing to second it, then you'll take a voice roll call on it. If the motion passes, then you can discuss how to amend the moment, the minutes, rather.
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend as described.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so motion passes. So how do you? Three, two.
What's your, of reconsidering? Oh, okay, I didn't hear that. Okay. Would it be possible to ask the member of the public who feels they were misrepresented to explain that again to us, so that we can properly represent that comment in the minutes?
Can I just request that, I think the two items that were mentioned were that two letters weren't included, that he thought were in timely enough to be included. The other was that changing the phrase from "us making progress on the Gateway area plan" to "lack of progress on the Gateway," is that the way you heard it? Or do you want to hear it again from the public?
If I might offer as well, you know, that the minutes, if they're to be amended to further reflect, you know, each person's interpretation of, you know, whether the minutes accurately reflected what they felt like was spoken into the record, which is recorded on our website, which they can, you know, promote to other people that, hey, it was taken out of context, here's the true words that I said, that we may have, I would, I'm concerned that this is a precedent that the planning commission is setting that would generate a lot of comments like this to your minutes each time, not only revising their words, but potentially revising yours. This is intended to be a quick synopsis of the actions that were taken. And so certainly if the commission wishes the staff to revise these, we absolutely will. You take that action, but I'm just offering that there were four other people who were cited on here who may also feel that they weren't accurately reflected in these minutes as well. We tried to capture the content. They spoke about the, their words that are recorded in perpetuity onto our website, or they speak for themselves.
I think that's why I prefer a more skeletal version of minutes, so that we don't have opportunities for misinterpretation and bias in staff's recording, but because in this case, someone actually did come to our meeting and expressed concern, I think it would behoove us to revise this particular set of minutes in response to that critique.
Is the community member satisfied with those two changes? Yes, okay, so the two changes that you proposed.
I'm not proposing any changes, so that has to come from someone else. I was just reiterating what I thought I heard.
Right, and he was satisfied, the community member was satisfied with those two changes. So do we need, are we done, or do we need to vote again, or?
Nope, you need to vote again. If you want those minutes to be amended as stated, you need a motion and a second and a majority vote to change the minutes.
Okay, I move to revise the minutes as stated.
And I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to our public hearing. So we're going to consider a recommendation to the city council on the Gateway area plan. This is a continuation from our meeting last time. Do we have any ex parte communication before we get a staff report? Okay, David, can we get a staff report, and then also can you get us back on track from kind of where we ended last meeting, so we can just hopefully go right into it? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and before I start speaking, I wanted to draw your attention and the public's attention to the SLIDO QR code and/or SLIDO identifier number PC at 1108. We'll be using that tonight to obtain public input, as we have at the last couple of meetings, and so I want people to have ample time to get to that. So you'll go to slido.com and either enter in number PC at, number PC 1108, or if you have the ability to do a QR code reader, you can point it at the QR code and that'll open up the SLIDO poll. So we are going to continue on. This is kind of part three of the issues. Identification and solutions set that we've been working on over the last several meetings. The planning commission took at its October 11th meeting the opportunity to work through some of the primary concerns that were being heard at that time. We took additional concerns from the public, added them to this list. Those concerns are listed here in column A. The subset information of ideas that came from those are in column B. The planning commission listed the items that they were interested in seeing discussed first, prioritized with the number one in column D. Some of the items for follow-up were, they decided they didn't want to follow up on, and so those were X-ed out. And then we have several others that are still on the priority list from October 11th and 25th that we'll start with. And then, as time allows, we will go on to the other items on the list. Again, as we've done in the past, as we're going through each of these items, we'll allow the public to make comment through SLIDO on their recommendations for what should be added to the solution set. We're working on the solution set now. And what considerations the planning commission might ask for resources from the planning, from the city council or from staff to complete your work reviewing the Gateway area plan. So the idea is that this solution set will generate a list of follow-up actions that the planning commission feels like need to be done before you can complete your work. Those follow-up actions are either going to be, we have the resources now at our disposal, or we'll be generating the resources through the work that we're doing and the EIR process that we're going through. We want some additional resource, such as, you know, someone to come speak to us, or, you know, a, you know, subcommittee, or other ideas that have been put forward by various community members, or we feel like we need an entire new study that isn't planned for at this point. And staff will take those recommendations and move them on to the city council for moving this process forward. So again, if you are out there in the participatory world of SLIDO, we'll be opening up questions so that you can give your suggestions. This time to make this process a little more efficient, we'll be showing the SLIDO simultaneous with the, with the solution sets. And if the planning commission sees things come up on the SLIDO that they want to add to the solution set, then we will dig into those in a little bit more detail. If you don't have a smartphone or a device, yeah, we'll get some pieces of paper that you can write your suggestions on to, and then we'll read those out to the commission and see if they want to add those to the list.
Yeah. I'm wondering if you can show more of the chart, because otherwise, we up here don't have access to it. In front of us, I have last week's chart, but I did not print out the updated version.
Yeah, we'll expand this chart. We'll move around on the chart to make sure that the commission can see all of the detail. Right now, we're going to keep the SLIDO up as well, so that you can see the public's input on SLIDO as it's coming up in real time, to see if you want to add those to the solution set. But I'll try and balance those two things. So.
Quick question, if it's okay to add to all the S D interruptions. On the chart that's available in the bottom of the agenda packet, it's another column where it shows the experts that are being recommended. Do you, so I want you to please read the expanded data.
Yeah, again, we're going to be balancing, allowing the planning commission to see what's happening on the SLIDO screen on this side and viewing the information that is on the spreadsheet on this side. So we'll try to adjust as we need to, to make sure that folks can, you know, see everything that's going on. But we'll be moving around the table as well. Okay, so at your last meeting, you covered liquefaction and geotech. You covered wastewater treatment and capacity and vulnerability, and you covered fire and police services. And the, hold on a second. Okay, okay. Yeah, that's correct. And so the, maybe that's hidden cell, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the cell that has the follow-up on.
Did, did we address financing as our last thing last time?
We did not.
No, okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, this is, so column C, which was hidden a moment ago, I just didn't recognize it, tells the follow-up action. So for liquefaction and geotech, the Planning Commission decided not to take a follow-up action.
Did we get to infrastructure impacts?
Uh, yeah, hang tight, let's see. Jesus, and I apologize for this. One moment. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna double check the. I'm not, not seeing it on here, are you? Okay, pardon the technical difficulties, we're gonna try and. Top Concerns, Reference. Okay, I'm just gonna double check and make sure this is the right spreadsheet. Right off the same sheet?
Yep, on that exact same sheet.
Solutions.
Is there any way to print out the copies of the appropriate spreadsheet to distribute to everyone in this room right now, and then to put online?
Yeah, if you'll give me just a brief moment.
Perhaps we can just talk to each other?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna reproduce this from the, the work that was in, the worksheet that was in, that's on the website, that was referenced in your, in your staff report. So at the last meeting, this follow-up on liquefaction and geotech was none. Sea level rise, we did not get to yet. Follow-up on wastewater treatment was none. And again, these were the priorities, which is why they were numbered one. On fire, police, you said you wanted presentation. And that's as, yeah, that's as far as we got thus far. And so with, with that, sorry, we'll, we'll bring this back up. We'll start with, again, starting with the sea level rise, which was the next item that we didn't get to at this, get through at the last meeting. So with that, the follow-up column still reflects that this is a high priority for the City Council, for the Planning Commission. And the. The, the items that we had listed here as existing studies was provided to the, the Planning Commission for you to review in advance. It gave the topics of the, you know, topics for the titles of the, the studies that we have included in this list, as well as the link for the Planning Commission to review. In addition to this work, sea level rise is an ongoing topic that we're working through our local coastal planning work with, and so we anticipate additional studies. Currently, we have regional collaborations initiating in response in part to the Grand Jury Report, and the work that we've been doing even before the Grand Jury Report to try and get regional collaboration. So right now, for sea level rise, we have our vulnerability studies, we're done in 2018. We have our local coastal program update, which is going to includes, include an adaptation plan that the Coastal Commission will approve before it's adopted. We have the recently adopted wastewater treatment plant vulnerability analysis that was included in the coastal development permit that was approved for Phase One improvements on the wastewater treatment plant by the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission also required a follow-up wastewater treatment plant, sea level rise evaluation, to look at adaptation, so that'll be coming out. In addition, I provided some resources that we have on hand, including the NOAA mapper and the FAQs on sea level rise, and the Gateway area plan that we provided before.
Could I ask a quick question? I really enjoyed the webinar that we just did that you presented. Could we put that up here as a link for folks who may have missed that?
Yeah, we can add that for sure.
A lot of the information that we're going to need to refer to will hopefully be included in the local coastal program update. And of course, since these are both going to be elements of the general plan, they need to be consistent with each other. So what I would hope to have here is an assurance that after we have the full content of our draft local coastal program, which will be an element of the general plan, that we return to the gateway plan and review it in light of the local coastal program to ensure that those two processes are consistent. And obviously, then, the Coastal Commission may have something to say about the general plan and its relevant elements. So I, I just want to make sure that we're not going to say, gateway done, let's move on to the local coastal program, oops, gateway is done.
No, yeah, absolutely, and we're, we're reviewing those kind of concurrently. The Planning Commission looked at the local coastal plan zoning map just towards the end of last year. And we may have even looked at it at the beginning of 2022. And you may recall that we are proposing a zone change on the, the lower gateway portion that's in the coastal zone, so that it's primed to be consistent with the zoning that's being adopted into the, the gateway area as well. And absolutely, that consistency comparison will, will run concurrent as we both do the draft of the local coastal program, and as we do the, the gateway area plan, to make sure that those are consistent with one another.
Okay, and can we make sure that that review actually is at the Planning Commission level, and not just at the staff level, and make a, a scheduled time to do that?
Yeah, the, the Planning Commission is going to have to make a recommendation on both these documents, you're absolutely going to review those, and that, that consistency determination is part of your review. So absolutely, yeah, that'll happen at the Planning Commission level. I did want to mention as well, since Commissioner White brought up the, the recent event put on by Smart Coast, California, that the Coastal Commission presented at that event as well, and they acknowledged that, you know, we're all kind of working, you know, towards the same goal, that there are different, you know, differences of, you know, focus, and that there's inherently within that, you know, that, you know, the difference between the statewide goals for the Coastal Commission and, and the local goals. There's, you know, inherent tension, but that, that inherent tension and the way that we work through those issues together are bearing good fruit. So I feel like we've got a great working relationship with the Coastal Commission's staff right now, our local staff, and the state level, the commissioners and the, the state leadership are really taking a close look at how we adapt coastal, adapt coastal resources to sea level rise, and the thinking is constantly changing, so looking forward to that.
David, can I ask for a point of clarity? The LCP update will be 2324, so, and ultimately, the Coastal Commission has to sign off on that, is that correct?
Correct.
So we do the best we can, and then they have to sign off on it?
Yeah, the, the process is a little circuitous. We do a local approval, then we send it to the Coastal Commission, and then if they approve it, then we have to do a secondary approval, accepting their, their approval. Or if they amend it, then we get a second chance to do a new approval to incorporate their changes, and then it becomes certified at that point. So it's a little circuitous.
So the areas of the gateway that are in the coastal zone, is that the point at which the Coastal Commission will have the largest layer of interest on that zoning, and what kind of build-out could occur in that region?
That's certainly the time when they will have, you know, discretionary authority over the, the proposals that we're making. But we've engaged the Coastal Commission right from the beginning on, on this Gateway area plan. They're fully aware of what we're proposing, and are interested to see the local coastal program amendment that incorporates it.
So in other words, they've seen the maps, they know that this conversation's going on.
Absolutely.
We're not going to get all the way to somewhere between 23 and 24 and have them say, wait a minute?
No, we're, we're working with the local coastal staff, you know, along the way to make sure that we're, you know, trying to stay on track.
Yeah, um, one kind of curious potential glitch here has to do with the role of the university as a landowner within the coastal zone. My understanding is that although they would not be subject to the city's regulatory authority in that area, they would still be subject to the Coastal Commission's regulatory authority. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding, and it depends on how the property is held, and, you know, the purposes of the, you know, of the project.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, for example, the former, former industrial electric building, which they've already decided is going to be their new nursing training facility, but also the possibilities that they might acquire land in what our plan is now calling the barrel zone for possible development as, as housing, or something else. That, that would still be subject to Coastal Commission authority, even if it's not subject to our regulatory authority, is that correct?
Yeah, and I just want to confirm that you're saying hypothetically, if they acquired?
I am saying hypothetically with regard to the north of Samoa, but they do in fact own that land on the south. It's all going to be under our local coastal program, so just wondering.
I can't give you a simple answer, because it depends on how the property is held when they come in. And so currently, I believe the industrial electric property is held at, as the university holdings, the, the land holdings. I don't think it's held by the state, and so they would be subject to a coastal development permit, potentially depending on how consistent they are with, you know, we, we need to evaluate it. But, yeah, it's possible that the city would have local regulatory authority over a project like that.
Are you saying how property is vested would make a difference on how the Coastal Commission treats it?
It depends on the ownership, yeah. If the state owns a piece of property, generally speaking, the cities, the state has, trying to blank on the, the word, give me a moment, but the state has sovereign immunity to the, the city's local jurisdiction. But the university also has a land holding branch, the foundation that holds land, and there may be certain circumstances under which properties held by the foundation are permitted by the state, and there may be some situations where they're permitted by the city. And it's a lot more complex than I can describe in, you know, without some graphics. We did have a, a staff report on this before, and it's also very sensitive to the facts of an individual circumstance. So high level, the answer is, it depends.
How many years of school did it take you to, kidding, okay. So we're talking about sea level rise, so you're looking for feedback from us, David, on what additional information that we might need? And then are we going to hear from the community at all? Is that where we're going, or am I skipping ahead?
I'm sorry, so the, the flow for the meeting will be to review, if we can figure out how to look at them, the comments that are coming in through SLIDO, and then if any written comments come in, we'll, we'll go ahead and read those in as well. And your, your objective tonight is to determine, again, the, the focus is to determine whether or not you need additional resources to make the decisions that you need to make on this. Now, I'd mentioned before, sea level rise is one of the areas of study that the city has spent a lot of time investigating, researching, getting papers, investing staff energy, working with regional collaborators, working with federal, state, local entities that are, are familiar with this. And despite all of that, I also feel like it's, you know, important for the community to, to hear once again, in, in a variety of different ways, what you're, what's going into your thinking. And so even though I feel like we have all the studies that we need to move forward and make decisions on sea level rise, staff is recommending the, the Planning Commission, you know, ask for something, whether it be a, you know, presentation by a group of experts, or, you know, a synopsis, a report summarizing, you know, the, the work that we've done, the work, where we're going, or do something to have a further conversation about sea level rise, just to indicate that you're paying attention to this.
Can I ask a question about the SLIDO process? Is there a reason why members of the community are being cited as anonymous rather than appearing with their names?
I don't know for sure, but I think they have to select to give their name.
Yep, they do, they have to select to give their name, or they can just be anonymous. If you just go in and put anything in, it's, it's anonymous, unless you go in and actually edit that to change your name.
And, and for the purposes of the work that we're doing here tonight, we're really trying to source ideas, and so I think it's fine if people want to put their name on it, that's great, if they don't, then that's fine also. We've got a couple here, have Alder on there, give a presentation. So, you know, there's suggestion to bring presenters, that's something you should consider. I believe it's actually one of the. I believe it's actually one of the things that we've talked about before.
David, I heard that Cal Poly has a sea level rise institute. I would love to hear from somebody there or possibly Alder on Laird. But I think I would rather hear from somebody from Cal Poly if we can get them in and just get our questions answered. It seems like there's still some questions hanging out there. You know, because we've seen, I've looked at everything that you've got on here, all the studies and everything like that. But you don't get to ask questions and I would like to have questions and let the community ask questions also.
Sorry, thank you. Hearing is followed up to get presenters, so maybe to move this along if we can.
Yes, follow up, get presenters. I would like someone outside of the city, presented from outside of the city. I know we have our list of experts, apparently everybody on the city is an expert. So I'd like to hear, I think the community would benefit from just hearing somebody coming in from outside telling us the same thing you've been telling us the whole time. I think it would go a long way.
We do it.
Is there any way to distinguish between what is particular to the gateway and what we're going to be needing to look at for the local coastal program? Because I feel that all of the sea level rise issues are really things that we're going to need to look at, primarily in the local coastal program. And to do it only in the context of the gateway plan rather than in the much broader context of the LCP, seems backward.
Can I just jump in real quick? I think that you're absolutely right. We wouldn't ask presenters to come and just focus on the 138 acres. We'll be talking, and what I'm thinking is we'll have a study session, we'll have presenters come. You know, you'll hear staff will support or provide support for what we've done in the past. We'll have some presenters, you guys can ask questions, you can set up a forum for the public to ask questions. How's that sound?
That sounds good, and it would be nice too if we could, the commission could send in their questions and kind of, maybe we all have questions about one certain thing, we don't, you know, just kind of get them ahead of time because we're probably going to get them to come in here once, you know?
Yeah, and again, just for the sake of this process, we spent quite a bit on sea level, time on sea level rise. I think we can work out the details, the specific details of what those events are going to look like. But what I'm hearing is like a study session with presenters. And if we can do a quick straw poll, I think we have enough to move forward with. And then we could even have, if we need to, on certain items, come back and say, hey, let's have a finer resolution on the scope of that. But just so we can get through the material, I think I've got enough on this one.
I have a brief question about, follow up, if you don't mind. Does the Coastal Commission have some kind of document that we can read, that you can share with us? That is there, and it's probably volumes, but is there a short story on how they see coastal development right now? You know, at so many feet above sea level or, I don't know. Is there, I'd like to know what they're thinking, what they're promoting, what's the general gist of how they're going to weigh in on the LCP eventually? If there was, if there was something that you could share with us that could be part of a packet, something that we could study in preparation for this discussion, that would be great.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
So what do we do with the SLIDO?
Is it possible to get speakers on the video, David, instead of just the map? I realize being on Zoom, no one can see anyone who's speaking, maybe that's not possible.
Yeah, I think we can split the screen.
Can we see the SLIDO? There might have been some other ideas in there that we may need to consider. Normally, these community members have some really good ideas.
Okay, so the solution. Yeah, Dylan, would you mind putting the screen back on the monitor? So the solution sets a still need to have an independent scientific survey that is performed from an organization that is not the city. Experts need to be unbiased sources, not just those on the city staff. Cal Poly needs to pay taxes if Arcata is going to consider Cal Poly's needs at all. Have Alder on there, give a presentation to Planning Commission as an expert. No sea level rise inundation mapping. Identify and designate the wastewater treatment plant facility location before the plan is approved. Map all wetlands ahead of passing the gateway plan. Cal Poly can build campus extensions in other cities nearby like CR does. In contentious times, all city employees and elected officials need to be audited to ensure no conflicts involving corruption. Maybe just stop trying to use SLIDO.
That's my favorite one so far.
Identify relocation sites, and are we still live with SLIDO? Because maybe we can cut the, or is that going to stop me from? Okay, I'm going to read a few more of these because, let's see. Identify relocation sites for the wastewater treatment. What about splitting the screen top and bottom? Bob Gearhart is an additional presenter. There's an opportunity to create topic working group. We need to get updated projections about sea level rise and groundwater inundation. You need to bring in local experts such as Alder on Laird, folks from Cal Poly. Stormwater runoff needs to be addressed properly, properly citing infill to reflect sea level rise models. What a pickle. Engage with Cal Poly, focus on funding research in this exact dilemma. I think I know from that phrasing exactly who that is. Existing FAQ regarding sea level rise on city website, City of Arcata and Coastal Commission analysis for upgrades to wastewater treatment facility. City of Arcata King Tide Project, City of Arcata 2018 Risk Assessment. So some of these are things that we've already done. Okay, now we're going to stop the SLIDO, you have all those to consider. Is there anything that you want to add to the solution set? Or do you feel like you're, can incorporate those into a study session? I think a lot of that can be brought into a study session format with a couple of presenters, couple of city staff, some, you know, the folks from the community, certainly involving the local coastal program and how it relates to this decision.
Yeah, I'm still in favor of someone from Cal Poly and either Bob or Alder on. What do you think, Dan?
Nothing new came up on SLIDO that wouldn't be incorporated in what we've already outlined as our study session with presenters. So all those same questions can be asked that night. So I'm up for moving on.
All right, I think we're on.
Okay, any opposed, I guess.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Said any opposed, I guess, there, I've heard.
Oh, all in favor, I guess, are we voting on this or are we just doing a straw poll?
Straw poll.
Straw poll.
Move on, move on.
Okay, the next topic is lack of multimodal infrastructure. Not going to go into detail on this. I do feel like the gateway area plan itself goes into a fair amount of multimodal infrastructure detail. In terms of the policy level, the form-based code will go into even greater detail. The community benefits program that you'll be discussing at your next meeting can hit on some of these topics as well. And so the question of the commission is, do you feel like you have enough in the resources that are in the plan and in our existing policies? Do you want to do a study session on this? Do you want to do a breakout subcommittee? You feel like you need a study or do you feel like you've got enough?
Could I just ask a quick question? Are we going to do a little SLIDO poll just to see if anybody has anything extra?
SLIDO is open right now for this question. Each topic has a SLIDO.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
And David, how does AB 2011 that Judith sent us? How does this relate, because let's see, here we can, is it 2011 where they are exempt from providing any parking? Is that the one?
I don't remember that specific detail of AB 2011, but the.
Is that a different one? But there is one in here that says you can convert commercial properties to residential and you don't have to provide any parking at all.
Yeah, that very well could be a component of AB 2011. It's sounding familiar.
So we need to get some more information regarding that? Because that seems like it would have to do with that subject. So anyway, so how do, what do we still need on this? What do you guys still need to hear from or do you have enough?
This ties into the, you know, discussions that we've already had and will continue about just transportation in general, the circulation of gateway area, the ideas that have been proposed, how we feel about them, the trails. I don't feel complete on it, that's for sure. I like to think that we're going to get more presentation like from the man, the fellow, the company that outlined that we already heard from once, I'd like to have a question and answer. I think we had him on Zoom one night, but I didn't, you know, it'd be great to have him here. The one that came up with the new traffic flow situation. I'd love to have more opportunity to really question and answer on that one. And that might affect, I mean, I know it will affect other things, other multimodal, you know, they all dovetail together, of course. So I don't know how others feel, but I sure don't feel complete on that topic.
I'm glad you said that because I, the same way, I still don't feel like I know enough at all. And this is going to be like really, really important in Arcata, getting people out of their cars. And so who was that person that came in and talked to us? What was his credentials?
Yeah, we had a presentation at the study session from Todd Dregenza, who's with our consultant team. Focused primarily on the K and L Street couplet, but also gave a general overview. We could certainly have him come back and speak to you. Again, if you'd like, I do think that there's going to be a lot, as Commissioner Tagney says, a lot of discussion around this topic just naturally as we work through this material. And you may have a better sense of it once you go through the community amenities section because alternative transportation is one area where the community benefits program can target particular kinds of projects or types of, you know, programs, you know, that we've talked about the bus pass program that will facilitate additional alternate transportation, multimodal infrastructure. So that's, you know, you'll have a better sense for it. So I guess the question is, you know, do you feel like you need an additional, something additional to the work that we're already doing in the course of this work? And we do have some other items coming up on the list here.
Yeah, I think this is another case of putting a bit of cart before our horse because this is all going to come up in the general plan update, in the circulation element and in the land use element. I think that it behooves us to consider this set of issues for the entire city of Arcata rather than just for the gateway. And then to look specifically at the gateway in that context. For example, we don't want to provide additional community benefits credit for a gateway property owner, for example, for something that we really believe should be applied citywide. And so I think we probably need to consider every one of these issues on a citywide basis. And then, because this will all happen before the general plan update is adopted as a whole, apply those things to the gateway to see if there are any particular or special issues that come up in the gateway context above and beyond the cities. And in that sense, we have a real opportunity because we're updating, you know, the circulation element of the general plan as well. I'd like to do that ideally before we hone in on the gateway only.
Yeah, again, we're, you're absolutely right, we're going to have the circulation element running concurrently. I guess the exercise we're working through tonight is to ask, to answer the question the council asked you on your August 23rd study session. What additional resources does the Planning Commission feel it needs in order to do the work that you need to do to make a recommendation on the gateway? And so recognizing some of this may be applicable to, you know, citywide policy. Some of this you may want to incentivize within the gateway, some of it may be a community benefit. You might want to look at it in total. All of these things may be true and we'll get through that process as we work through all of this over the course of the next several months. The question is, do you believe you need something in particular because of the policies and direction that we're going with the gateway? And if we could answer that through some kind of a straw polling now that helps us to start working on what those additional resources are above and beyond what we're already proposing to incorporate?
I'd like to make a suggestion for that then. And I'm going to make exactly the same suggestion in the context of the LK couplet and L Street impacts. We've had some very specific detailed presentations about the L Street, K Street couplet and the conversion of L Street. We have barely had any adequate treatment of the alternatives to that, including potential changes to the flow patterns on K Street that would allow the L Street corridor not to be recast as kind of a one-way arterial with all the disruption of the bike path that that involves. I'd like to see that much more fully developed, including a lot more information since we're doing this in the multimodal mode about how on earth we're going to have a one-lane road there with bus service and a clear flow of traffic and safety for bicycles and pedestrians under the city's proposed plan. So I think we need to look at all of these issues along with the L Street, K Street issue together and think of those in terms of multimodal alternatives, several alternatives for us to consider rather than just the single alternative that was detailed at great length in the draft plan.
Okay, so I'm hearing a particular item on L and K couplet with detail on alternatives. Can we do a straw poll?
Yes, I agree with that, yes.
Yes, although what does that look like? Like the GHD guy that is the traffic analysis that?
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll bring our consultant team together, we'll bring the, you know, the staff team together, the engineer and environmental services director. We'll provide you with what the alternatives are that were evaluated, the alternatives if the LK couplet isn't part of the plan. And y'all can ask questions, the public can ask questions, it'll be, it'll be a hoop.
So could I, because we jumped down to the L Street and we're including that in the multimodal, would we still be getting input from the SLIDO before we do that straw poll or?
Scott, we didn't hear from you.
Thank you, I agree with Judith and I'm conflicted about the current proposal regarding L Street. I would like to hear more discussion there.
Okay, so and to Commissioner White's question, we can add the L Street agenda item on and then look for other things. This isn't just like a one answer, you can have multiple answers for, so.
Could I ask another question?
Yeah.
So we're looking at the multimodal infrastructure. Is this the chance that we would ask for an expert perhaps to come in in addition to something that's not currently listed?
Sure, if you want to ask for additional outside folks to come in and.
We were talking at one point, long time ago, about Sorrel Place of possibly doing a shared electric vehicle program, but then it just kind of waffled away. I'm wondering if that is something we could look into as a possibility?
Yeah, so first, the Sorrel Shared Electric Vehicle Program hasn't waffled away. We have funding for it, it just hasn't gotten off the ground yet. There are several items related to that project that are still in process. And Jen, do you know, can you do a quick update on, I'm going to put Deputy Dart on the spot here. Can you do a quick update on the? the spot here, can you do a quick update on the IIG and the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant?
Sure, happily. So we have the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant, and the majority of the projects related to that are just now starting. So those are the offsites. I can't recall exactly what they stand for, but there's an acronym for it. That would include the bus, that's the bike share, the electric vehicle that you're talking about. So a lot of those components are happening in this coming fiscal year and probably through the next fiscal year. But we do anticipate that some of those things that were amenities related to that project are going to be coming on board through that Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities. The other grant that was awarded was the Infill Infrastructure Grant, which, the park, Shea Park that was just completed, that was funding from that grant. So we're going to start to see some of the projects related to that come on board as well this fiscal year. Actually, those ones have to, because that grant's going to expire. So, yeah, it's a lot of exciting things. And I can give more detail on that at a later date if you're interested in it.
And that program is something that we do have as a community amenity that we'd like to expand into other projects, where they have basically a project-based, you know, shared vehicle, project-based, shared bicycles. So those kinds of things are already included in the plan.
Can I just say, too, that we're potentially looking at IIG for other sites, including potentially the Valley West Red Roof, if it's available? So we will be looking at applying for those additional funding sources in the future that are related to affordable housing projects.
Thank you.
Okay, did everyone get in what they wanted to see for the multimodal infrastructure?
I have one more question.
Sure.
I don't know if there's anybody that can speak to the topic of future transportation alternatives, like as we electrify, if people live in multi-story buildings, where, how do they charge, you know, if there's not enough parking spaces, just things like that? And/or is there some vision towards shared vehicles? And I'm wondering if some progressive communities like Davis, who I'm sure are already moving on some of these types of housing developments, are coming up with the ideas of how to use less cars. I get the proximity issue, but then there'll still be a need for cars to go to the beach or do whatever. You know, if there was somebody that could speak to that and how that dovetails into this whole thing, because my short experience only allows me to think of our private automobiles and parking and all of that. And if there's something, some zingers that we just need to hear about, that are real, that are coming, that are, I don't know, other cities are using. I don't know if that's an expert in the community or an expert online, or something we need to watch or read, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we can incorporate that as well.
I couldn't help myself when he was talking about I had the Jetsons, right? Sorry, just a little humor.
Yeah, I mean, there's no question that, you know, that transportation is, you know, going to dramatically transform over the next, you know, 10, 20 years. You know, and we'll get into this in more detail when we're looking at this, but, you know, there are, you know, batteries that are in research and development right now that'll be able to be charged at the same rates as, you know, cars can fuel up at this point. And so when we have that kind of technology, it won't be as important to be tied to a docking station where you live. You'll be able to, you know, get filled up, so. But we'll bring that forward.
So do you have everything that you need for that category?
Yeah, I would suggest you go through the list. The top couple here deal with L Street, you've already addressed that.
Could we put it up on our screen? There you go.
Need a traffic study solely for the Gateway area, want more options for K Street. To the traffic study, we'll be doing a, you know, travel demand study that looks at the entire city, including the Gateway area, so that is incorporated and existing. Want more options for K Street, Plan B, concern in the second draft, watered down the policy that said there would be no parking requirements. There should not be parking requirements in the plan. Duly noted. What about review of the 2010 L Street Trail Study? I'm not sure what's being referenced there. Consider the responders, delivery garbage vehicles, definitely need to include those. Any new sidewalks should be graded in six feet wide. Arcata's bicycle boulevards. City should organize public feedback opportunity, community workshop like they're having for the H and G Street paving projects. Denser buildings with places to shop and eat on the ground floor help reduce car dependence, so being taller is a solution. Bike share program alignment with H, the Humboldt County Association and Government's 20-year regional transportation plan, which I believe we will be. City of Arcata Bike Ped Master Plan, Form-Based Code Community Minis Program, Bus Pass Program. No commute compares with what people are used to commuting in other areas. The Gateway Plan's multimodal infrastructure is drafted in Chapter Seven. Feel like you learned anything new there that you want to add?
Can I ask another question? The updated transportation element, will that also be incorporating updates to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan? Or will there be a separate update for that?
I'm sorry, which document?
The general plan's circulation element, will it incorporate a kind of an updated version to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan? Or will there actually be an update to that plan coming up in the near future?
Yeah, the Bike Ped Master Plan won't be updated in conjunction with the general plan update, but we will certainly have to, you know, take another look at that plan once the circulation elements are adopted and do revisions.
I was wanting to, I think the 2010 L Street, it was a prior study, is what they were referring to, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, I'm not sure which study that references.
So there was an L Street, I believe, an initial study that we did in 2010 that was talking about the linear park, if I'm not mistaken? Is that what we're referring to?
Okay, well, maybe you can share with me what that document is, because I'm not familiar.
Okay. I think I might have seen it on arcata1.com, but I can get it to you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not a frequenter of that website. Yeah, sorry. Patricia, let me know, it's actually, there's not a, it's not, I think it's being taken a little out of context here. The document is the Rail with Trail Operations Plan. It is not the L Street Linear Park Plan, or not the L Street, you know, it's been, it's been taken a little out of context. The L Street Operations Plan was one of the documents that was developed during the, Operations Plan was developed during the feasibility work that was being done on the Annie Mary Trail and the Bay Trail work that we were doing. And so the document is, all of those documents are on our website, certainly a great resource. If you Google Rail with Trail, Arcata, you should land on that page. I believe, in fact, I'm certain, actually, that I've sent each of you a link to that webpage in response to some of the comments that were made in the public about how this document had disappeared from the internet. I was showing you where the documents were, and so all of the documents associated with that project are located there. It's not, in fact, a master plan to create a linear park. I don't think linear park was a word until we started doing the Gateway Plan. Okay, so was there any other areas that you wanted to address, this lack of multimodal infrastructure? I think the solution set that we have so far is something that we can incorporate in the work that we're already doing. In terms of evaluating L and K Street, we also have all this other work that, as we mentioned, we'll be doing that includes, you know, community benefits analysis on these items, the mobility section of the Gateway Area Plan, the circulation element of the general plan, other ideas for solutions.
Where any of that would, some kind of presentation about future transportation issues that I brought up?
Yeah, we can incorporate this in this broader discussion, or in one of these discussions about this. And I've got a note to try and get a futurist in to talk to us.
Thank you.
Okay, infrastructure impacts was on as a priority. This goes beyond the, I think the way I responded here leads me to believe that I was seeing infrastructure impacts in the context of how new development was going to affect the infrastructure that we have in place now and the infrastructure needs we'll have into the future. We listed here the implementation measure that identifies infrastructure financing, and at our last meeting, Commissioner Mayor had pointed out that it would be nice to have all of the sources of financing listed in one place. We're definitely planning on bringing that as part of the course of this work. And so I guess if there are questions or comments about what additional infrastructure impacts that you'd like to know about, and then I can tell you whether they're incorporated in the existing body of work that we're planning on, or if we need to bring additional resources to bear on that. And I believe the infrastructure is open. Infrastructure Slido is open, if people want to start putting comments.
Yep, it's open.
There, you've discussed a few times in the past forming various types of special financing districts. They've come and gone in this part of the plan and in other types of initiatives we've been addressing. It would be great if we could have a kind of global picture of all of those proposals and how any of them would relate to the gateway, and ideally to have some numbers attached to them. One of the things that I've been hearing about has to do with hesitation on the part of some Arcatans to be subsidizing a level of intense development in the gateway at the expense of other improvements in other parts of the city. And so that seems like, in some cases, a backward way of going at it, but we do want to retain the principle that profitable development has some chance of kind of paying its own way in terms of additional infrastructure demands. And so a lot of detail on that would really help beyond, you know, the five-year capital improvement plan and beyond sort of vague mentions of various types of new financing mechanisms. We lost the redevelopment districts, we lost that, you know, structure in 2012. In fact, the Gateway Plan is a type of redevelopment planning, and so it's up to us to put that bigger scheme together financially, and it would be great to have a picture that sort of fits into the context of the rest of Arcata's financing. I understand it's hard to look at just the gateway itself, but to the extent that we can do that, it's something we probably need to know about. And this is, you know, it's not something that the capital improvements plan or an EIR is going to go into at the level of information that we probably need to know about here. So the more we know, the better.
Yeah, and I think we've got on there, I added on to this list and slash discussion of infrastructure financing, and we had talked about it last time, so I'd honor the discussion that we had last time, recognizing we're not going to be able to tie specific projects to, you know, to budgetary level infrastructure planning, but we can bring a list and as much detail as we can possibly bring to the planning commission. So that's one item on the list.
Also, I was going to talk about this under fire and police services, but regarding our fire district, if they are going to, you know, pass some sort of bond or measure, it's doubtful that people outside of Arcata and McNevel will want to approve something to pay for Arcata's fires. So we need to talk about that, too. So it might, I don't know if that's to be included in here or in the other category, but we do need to talk about that.
Now, infrastructure wouldn't include fire, would it, and police?
I mean, I guess it depends on your definition.
Okay, because we already touched on fire up above it as well.
We did, and I think that that discussion can fall into there. As I mentioned before, I spoke with the chief, and he has a, you know, a general idea of the kinds of things that we can do to help mitigate the issues that are of concern to them. And so we'll be, you know, bringing that forward in December. I think he's going to come and talk with y'all.
Okay, so infrastructure in general, I'm thinking are underground kind of facilities, roads, structural things. Is there, I mean, and my personal feeling is that we've talked about the wastewater treatment plant plenty, and had a lot of good presentation on it, and that there's some long-term state studies that are going to be occurring over the next few years that are going to look at the, like, 50-year scenario? Isn't that what I heard from Emily just last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just talking to myself a little bit here, but is there anything that anybody feels like we need specific presentations that we haven't already had, aside from this fiscal layer that's a new topic?
Yeah, and this is something that's going to come up in the Gateway zoning code anyway, but since there's an infrastructure section here, what would be involved in requiring utility undergrounding for all new development in the Gateway District? I think that's something that involves some fancy negotiations with a lot of different parties, PG&E and others, but it does seem like an opportunity that the city should not let get away, and that this is the time to really discuss it and make sure that that's on our agenda.
Yeah, I can just quickly pair it for you, what I've heard from our engineering division and our consultants, and certainly this could be part of a future discussion. I don't think we need anything additional at this point, but the undergrounding, I think, is a desirable possible outcome, and I think that's something that the commission should consider for community benefits. It's cost prohibitive in our environment for most projects, and so we can have a broader discussion on that. And when we were talking about it at the, you know, internally, not going to be able to verbatim tell you what was said, but basically, you know, what our consultant told us was, you know, paraphrased, if you want to underground utilities, then you shouldn't also be trying to get affordable housing, that, you know, yes, it's very beautiful to not have to look at telephone poles, power poles, but that it's going to be cost prohibitive to bring those to market.
I think we should see it also as a public safety issue, and when you look at it that way, suddenly the costs look a little bit different. And I know that other cities have used major redevelopment opportunities as their moment to require undergrounding, have done it successfully, and have done it with affordable housing. So I don't think we should take, can't do it as our bottom line here.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that when you go through the community benefits program, you know, you'll want to, you know, put all this on the table. I believe what's in the plan now is a desire to have undergrounding, but not a require to have undergrounding. And, you know, at the end of the day, when we get through the community benefits program, we'll have to, you know, vet those with the feasibility of development, because, you know, we can ask for too much. We've been known to ask for too much before, and when you ask for too much, you get a project that's approved in a way that meets your vision, but then the projects never get built. And so we have to balance those two things. So certainly we'll bring that forward. I don't think, what I'm hearing though, is there's not a special study or discussion that you feel like you need in order to evaluate that?
Did we not have undergrounding? Did we not have undergrounding in the Plaza area a few years ago?
We have an undergrounding district in the Plaza area. I'm not going to be able to tell you a whole, whole lot about it. Again, that's a question for Natura, but we have an undergrounding district. We've been collecting funds for decades, and we have very few undergrounded projects as a result of those funds, because the amount of money we've been able to collect for those projects are de minimis compared to the cost of actually implementing the projects. And so there's been a discussion about canceling or, you know, unwinding the undergrounding district, because it's just not effective. It's not sustainable. But again, I'll have Natura come and talk to you about that in detail. But what I'm taking home is no need to add a specific additional resource. We can get that from, you know, follow-up discussion? Or do we feel like we need something additional?
I'd really, I'd really like to look at some of the Gateway area-wide infrastructure issues rather than looking at them project by project, and I think the undergrounding is one of them. So I would like more information about that possibility.
We can bring more information. I'll have Natura come and talk to you all about that.
Yeah, if there's any possible way to see undergrounding, both as a public safety and aesthetic improvement, I'd also be a huge fan of hearing more about that.
Got it. The next item on your list is ownership opportunities.
David, did you want to open the Slido for the last one?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so Slido, I'm going to zoom in a little bit so you can read along with me. That might be too much. Okay, "How proposed residential development will impact local taxes resulting from additional infrastructure needed to support it." I think that point was just made. "Talk with Arcata Fire. Cost of increased staff." We'll be doing that. "Estimation of increased tax base due to implementation of GAP." That's also true. "Examine utility undergrounding as well as microgrids." We just discussed that. Microgrids have been on a discussion point before, and that's something that you can consider in your community benefits. "Financial demands for Fire will affect McKinleyville, Manila, and all other property owners in the Fire District." "Windsong Undergrounded Utilities. The city is selling off land that was intended for relocating the light industry from Gateway area." Little Lake and Happy Valley. "Existing capital improvements program planning. Existing Gateway Area Plan Chapter 11 Infrastructure." So I think most of those concepts came up in a course of our discussion and/or our not solution sets, per se. Anything new from the commission you want to add there? Okay, ownership opportunities. Jen, do you want to jump into this and I'll add it?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I think we've kind of listed what there is here. Obviously, there's opportunities to, for condo development, which I think we've talked about before. I think that's talked about in the plan. Our Home Buyer Assistance Program, which is, you know, can only do so much based on what there is available to purchase, is on pause with the state right now, so that's something that we're looking at getting back at some point. Obviously, we've run one forever. We'll continue to run one. I think those would be kind of the main focuses. We've talked about community land trusts. That's something that we partner with one of the nonprofits here, Rural Communities. It's something that would maybe be run better on a larger scale than what we've got, but that is another something to consider as well. So those are kind of the topics.
I was wondering if we might have somebody to come talk about some, in addition to the land trusts, which I think would be Humboldt Housing, but also some cooperative housing models where you can have homeownership opportunities?
Yeah, we could definitely do that. And I think that one of the ways that we can promote homeownership in the Gateway area is through some of the community benefits programs. We'll be talking about that next time in terms of, you know, how that might, you know, be structured and what it might look like. But we definitely have, you know, a lot of different folks working on this. There's a whole group from different sectors that meets three times a week that looks at housing. Our mayor is a member of that group and helps facilitate those, and so we can have some folks from that group come and talk to you about what they're doing as well. Open Door has been a real innovator in this space, recognizing that in order to maintain a workforce, they need to take home, providing homes and homeownership opportunities and the ability for their workers to build equity into their own shop, even though their healthcare providers are finding themselves become housing providers because they cannot maintain a workforce without housing. So I think it'd be interesting to hear from, you know, a couple of different folks through NUR. So if you're interested, we could try and coordinate some folks to come talk to you about that.
Could we do that as a study session with the City Council?
Yeah.
Is the commission interested in setting up a subcommittee on this topic? It feels to me like it's a big one and that there's a lot of community resource out there. I don't know. If on any topic, a study session seemed obvious. This one to me sure feels like it could.
I concur.
Yeah, a subcommittee might be good, and I want to be on it. Yeah, that might be good with all of the above, including local lenders and Fannie Mae lenders, and just we need to look at every single thing that possibly could be available.
I agree with that. Julie, I know you had talked, you have some specific ideas about ways in which condo development could be encouraged, so I'd like to see that incorporated into a bigger discussion.
And then if we, if this happened and we, and something was set up, a study group or a working group, whatever we call it, is the thought that then there would be a presentation from that group at planning? Is that the way you guys see it, planning?
I would think so, yeah.
Even though planned unit development isn't condos, they're somewhat similar. Could we look at that as well for homeownership opportunities? Great.
So I've got a joint study session and a subcommittee working group for this topic.
I like it.
David, do you want to pull up the Slido?
Yeah. Anything else? I'm sorry, what did you say, Jen?
I was going to have David pull up the Slido, and I input the two comments that came in into Slido.
Okay, we've got "actively solicit developers interested in developing condo projects." Could be incorporated in the community benefits. "Encourage tiny home communities to allow for first-time equity opportunities similar to South G Street Development." Oh, that's the Sandpiper Mobile Home Park. "Reinstate the city's first-time homebuyer program." "Community land trusts. Set up subcommittee inviting local contractors as well as local lender investors and businesses interested in investing because they need staff housing." This is kind of a reproduction of what the NUR group I mentioned is already doing, and so I think that's, you know, we can definitely incorporate that. "Look into co-op housing options." Let's be honest, developers would have to build condos for there to be homeownership, and we cannot require that. I just want to put, you know, in your ear the idea that, you know, this could be a, you know, community benefit, that if that's the kind of thing that we want to have happen in our community, and we say, hey, part of getting this streamlined permitting process, you need to build condos, someone's going to select that. "Could the city support single-family homeowners in developing units in accordance with Senate Bill 9?" We definitely do. We have one SB 9 subdivision so far. "Ownership opportunities are critical for maintained community investment." Drew. "Limited equity housing cooperatives." Good idea. "Homebuyer Assistance Program. Community Benefits Program. Unlikely at any level of benefit would entice a developer to build condos. Building condos is not economically feasible these days." Let's hope that person is wrong. "Community cooperatives. Housing element policy. Regulate investment buyers." And we'll circle back on this one. We'll come back to this because this comes up quite often. We probably have very limited ability to do that on a regulatory framework in a multi-tenant building, but I've been thinking about this and trying to figure out ways that there might be kind of like a regulatory agreement program that the, either the owners or if it's a condo project, you know, the homeowners association enters into that has some leverage, because the homeowners association would have actually a lot more leverage in who got to, you know, purchase those units than the city would. So I've got some ideas around that.
Can I just quickly address the Home Buyer Assistance Program? The reason that our program is not active right now is because the state has paused the program. So Housing and Community Development paused the program, and they have not given us really clear direction on how to reopen it. So we actually don't have the ability to do that. So as soon as we do have the ability to do that, we will be doing that. We have historically, as far as I'm aware, run a program and would like to continue running that program. So I just want to clarify that to make sure that that's clear.
As long as you open that can of worms. I also just want to add a couple of things. One is that we're looking at trying to have a limited opening on a homeownership program, kind of testing the waters with some successor agency money that we have, the housing successor. And then we're also looking at, we've been talking about for a number of years, but I think it's, you know, time to try and find the capacity to open a moderate-income housing program that would be similar to the homeownership program we've had for folks earning 80% or less area median income, but going up to 120% area median income. What we find is that there's a very small group of folks who earn less than 80%, but also can qualify for a large enough loan to buy houses in Arcata. And so if we, if we increase that level to 120%, we'll be able to have a more robust program is kind of the idea.
It would also be more of a down payment assistance program, as opposed to the program that we run, which really can be about 49% of the total indebtedness. So just a little different type of program.
Given Cal Poly's current approach to land acquisition, I'm wondering if this is an area that could be benefiting from some kind of collaborative agreement with the university. It's something that many other college towns have done, some quite successfully. And if we have healthcare workers also who need housing in our area, it could be an opportunity for some very robust partnerships. And it would be great to explore that. I'm not sure if the Gateway is the best place to do that. It sounds like the meetings with this other housing working group that are already going on may be exploring that. But it's certainly something that could be part of a community benefits institutional package with the Gateway as well.
Yeah, it's, I'm kind of vaguely picking up on what you're talking about. I'd love to talk about it more offline, and it sounds like something that would be of interest.
So I just had a quick question is with regards to having somebody come in. I know, like with NUR, we had Elizabeth recently do a presentation. Is there somebody there that could do a more general, but addressing these various housing options that can, like, recap it for us?
You know, I, I understand the desire to find somebody outside of our organization for many of these topics, but I guess I would offer that, you know, I participate in those meetings. I'd be happy to recap that for you.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
I'd feel a little sheepish about asking somebody else to do that.
No, that works.
It may be something also that the subcommittee that forms is interested in joining that meeting. It's not an exclusive invite. You can, you can come to those meetings, too. So yeah, great idea. The L/K Street Couplet, I just put C above. Congratulations, you already resolved this one. Okay, so public process transparency. I believe the commission already nixed this one as a topic they wanted to consider. Form-based code, you've already taken action on. You requested broader scope, and that's going on November 16th to the City Council.
Is that the one that includes potential alternative dates in January and February?
No, no, the dates aren't specified in that. That's merely a scope of work on October 11th, I believe. You saw a, what we've referred to then as the Platinum Plan, Form-Based Code. What had happened since June, when that Platinum Plan was presented to us, we said, "Look, we don't have the money to do the Platinum Plan. Are there pieces that you can pull off that will move us forward with engagement?" So Ben pulled off a couple of pieces that then became the series of Form-Based Code workshops that we've started on already. We have a couple more that are, that are in that scope. But then what the new scope of work does is builds on that body of work. And so that's, that's in the staff report. It'll be coming out Thursday, I believe, this Thursday for next Wednesday's meeting, including the scope that you had looked at in June, the scope that we had agreed to late June that incorporated components of that based on the funds that we already had available to us, and then a slightly revised scope of work that adds to, takes from that June scope of work that you looked at and adds to it a couple of components to give us a much more robust Form-Based Code. So that's what they'll be looking at on the 16th. Not with the dates in mind specifically, but with those events included. Active recreation in open spaces. Again, there's quite a bit already included. This looks like one that you had said last time you felt like you had enough on, as did parking, accessibility, gentrification. Wait, am I looking at this wrong? I think I've got this, got this backwards. Let's just go through these. Would you like to talk about? Oh, I see. Public process does not have an X to it. That's, the ones with Xs are the ones that you wanted to talk about. Sorry, I'm having trouble keeping up with my own coding. Active recreation, open spaces. We have, you know, a whole chapter on open space. We have an implementation program that identifies a public space acquisition program. Are there additional areas or studies or subcommittees that you want to do to explore
Are we going to have an opportunity to link this up with the general plan's open space and conservation elements? Because it does kind of seem like there are many policies that will apply to the whole city as well, including the Gateway.
Absolutely. And if I forget to say it on subsequent items, there's a Judith Mayer clause that goes with all of these. But yes, we will absolutely be looking at these in the context of the broader planning work we're doing and the general plan that we're adopting also, but want to make sure that if there are policies, because there's a little bit of specificity in the Gateway area that we're trying to dig into, if there, if there's policies that you're still unclear about, if there are programs that you feel like you need to hone in on in more detail, you know, the Parks and Rec Committee, the Creeks and Wetlands Committee, and the Forest Management Committee have all provided recommendations on these. And so I guess the question is, do you feel like you need additional studies beyond, beyond those in the work that we're already doing in addition to the general plan?
I guess we're in the cart and horse issue again, because I feel that most of the policies that would apply in the Gateway are things that would apply citywide, and it's hard to know what the Gateway needs to have as separate policies if we have not seen the updated version of the citywide policies first.
Yeah.
In fact, I shouldn't say we have not seen, because we're making those policies. So I'm not, I, I think that all of these issues require some very clear ideas about how we're going to nest the Gateway into the general plan, and we have not had those discussions in as much depth as I think we need to. So maybe that's... in as much depth as I think we need to. So maybe that's something that we actually do need to talk about upfront. And I, I think, I think you have a pretty good idea, David, about how you want to do it. But the Planning Commission hasn't actually had that discussion in the Planning Commission yet.
Yeah, and I totally agree. And I think that, you know, those things are going to roll out. The Conservation and Open Space element is, they're out and available. They're on our website. I can't remember whether or not the Planning Commission has seen both of those or not, but I think, I think you have. We're preparing the Parks and Rec element as well. And really, I think for the Gateway, there's some policy that's very specific in the Gateway. For example, the publicly accessible private open space, the, you know, park acquisition program that we added to it, the, the trails. I feel like the, the number of trails and bike lanes, the miles of, of trails and bike lanes that are being added in the Gateway Area Plan is probably, you know, I can't verify this for certain, but it's one of the most ambitious alternative transportation plans that we've, we've come up with in the city, adding quite a number of miles of trail in that small area. And so it's because there's a lot of opportunity in that area, you know, leveraging the, the rails and that sort of thing. But, but I guess the question is then, given those specific policies that we have in that, in the Gateway Area Plan that aren't applicable to other areas outside the city, that aren't going to be in the general plan at large, that you can then come back and, you know, compare and contrast at future dates when you're looking at those, but that's work the Planning Commission is going to do as a whole. Is there something that you feel like you need above and beyond what we already have in order to understand this better so that you can make a recommendation about it? Or do you feel like there's enough on the table right now that you can ask questions based on the materials that are in there? You don't need an additional study? You don't need a Parks expert to come and talk to you? You don't feel like you need to form a subcommittee? And if so, that's fine. All those other questions that you're raising can be addressed in due course through the, the review of these documents. What we're trying to get at in this process is what do you need that's additional to the standard course of a review that we're going to be doing?
Could I ask a question? And I apologize profusely. I might just be really excited about
Not at all.
the other thing that's happening. Did we just skip over the public process and transparency? Because one of those things...
No, you'd already, you'd already addressed that in your first meeting. You said, there's not a check next to this because you didn't want to go into that in more detail. You're more than welcome to take it up again. I have, you know, if you want to...
So I thought we were discussing the possibility of doing a survey.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, certainly...
From the community to ask for what they would like to see.
I'm sorry, ask who?
The community?
Yeah.
Residents of Arcata?
Yeah, I'm not sure the...
That we talked about sending...
I'm not sure the explicit connection between public process and transparent, transparency and the, the survey. I guess we have it listed here. Statistically valid survey. The commission moved on from this as a topic, but I don't think you've moved on from this as a potential recommendation. And so do you want to take a quick talk about that?
I would love to.
Does that mean we're done with the active recreation and open spaces?
We'll go to the slide O. Need to implement the park, park, whoops, are these done? Need... Okay, need to implement the Parkland Acquisition Plan, how to nest Gateway Plan into General Plan. Do not let developers include setbacks as community space. There needs to be a city-owned park within the Gateway. Community benefits program, Gateway Plan, Open Space Chapter. And then they referenced the implementation measure, I think, that I did as well. Oh, those were previous staff suggestions.
David, if we wanted to review, you know, like the Parks Committee or Wetlands and Creeks about the Gateway, is that in the draft plan?
It is. So with the latest updated draft, we color-coded the committee's recommendations so you could see which committee made what recommendation, which recommendation. We've been to, at this point, all of the committees at least once. And the concept is that they will, if they wish to, take a look at it again, once you've kind of made a recommendation so that they can see, you know, what happened with their recommendation. In addition, the committees, some of them are deciding to take issues up again and take second looks at, at different elements of it so that you'll, you'll continue to get recommendations forwarded from them. And we did have a request from a public member to make the color-coding a little bit more obvious. And we're, we're looking at trying to implement that to make sure that, you know, folks can have better access to, to that document. I'll just mention that as an aside, but we just haven't had the time to prioritize that just yet. So yeah, I'm, I'm taking it that active recreation, you're ready to move on, that you feel like you'll take the rest of this in the course of the work that we're doing?
I'm ready to move on. Is everyone ready to move on?
Okay. Do you want to do a statistically valid survey as a standalone? I'm sorry, can you step up to the mic if the chair's allowing public comment at this time?
It's, it's like a verbal slide O.
Most people would need the mic, but I don't enunciate so well. I was just, one thing that I put down, and I was a little late because I didn't realize that the slide O poll was open until the end. I was frantically typing it in, was I feel it's important to define the, the concept of publicly owned or privately owned public spaces. Because I feel like it's this concept that has a lot of promise, but I feel like from things that were presented recently, like with the Westwood Garden Apartments, that if you don't clearly define things, then they can fall really short of expectations. And I thought that might be something worth digging into on that particular, if it falls into this category. And that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, what is the definition of that? And then if it's, so it's privately owned property that they're required to have it open to the public? Is that what, what is it exactly? And then who has liability?
Yeah, so I guess just a, a point of order. Are you opening public comment? Should others be able to? Okay. The, the publicly accessible private open space is defined in the Gateway Area Plan. We can certainly further define it, but if, in effect, what it is, is that it's areas that are identified. And there's the map that shows where they wouldn't, you know, the, the projects or the properties that would be subject to it. That areas that are identified within private spaces that are privately maintained, privately held, but accessible to the public through easements and other agreements. And so they wouldn't, you know, fall away over time because they'd be recorded on the property as, as an accessible space. For the most part, these would be for all intents and purposes and from all appearances, public space. So you wouldn't walk up to them and think to yourself, am I walking onto someone's private property? Should I do this? It'll be obvious from the design that it's accessible to the public. And many, from the Parks and Rec Committee, for example, they say, they said they wanted to make sure that there were many active recreational opportunities to, to, you know, partake of in those as well, not just benches and, and wide sidewalks. So there's a whole range of different kinds of ways to include public space on private property that will provide a public benefit through those, those uses. And we've described, you know, a couple just now. Others might include little pocket parks, expanded sidewalks, you know, landscape easements that are open to the public to, you know, sit down and, and have a picnic on, for example. So we, we can take a look at the document in more detail and identify those.
And then the property owner who's granting the easement would have to maintain?
They would maintain it.
Okay.
Yep.
I, as far as more information goes, I think that when we're looking at the actual language of the Gateway Code, it would be really important to go into great depth about how the community benefits program would reward those types of dedications and what the limitations on them could be if we're going to be rewarding them with community benefits credits. And the reason I'm saying that is that in many cases, in other cities, those types of privately owned public open spaces become more and more private over time as issues of liability come up, as security issues arise, to the point where the public's access is suddenly more limited than the people awarding those initial credits had anticipated. In other words, oh, uh, let's just lock the gate at night. Let's limit the ages of the people who can use this playground. Let's only open it for special events. And so I think we have to be extremely specific about exactly how we're going to frame any public benefits credit that we provide for privately owned publicly accessible open space.
Yeah, I think all those are great topics that we need to go into a lot more detail on, you know, for sure. But again, I just want to confirm my understanding that there's no additional study group or...
Yeah, I'm saying we need that. We do need additional information.
Beyond what we're going to uncover in the course of the work. What I'm hearing is that we're going to evaluate that through the course of the work, developing these programs.
Sure, we can do it in the course of the work, but we need to make sure that it's specific enough to provide us with the values that we want to preserve.
Yes. Okay.
Do we all agree?
Confirmed?
Are we ready to move on?
I'm ready to move on.
Next category?
Statistically valid survey. I'm going to ask that if this is something you want, regardless of what you want to know about, that we just say yay or nay, because this can be an endless discussion that I think we need to have a very thoughtful approach to. We're going to need to, if we do this, we're, we're going to actually need to consult with a, going to have to consult with a survey firm beforehand to figure out how to ask the questions and not presume that we know how to ask those questions. So if we could do a quick straw poll, is anyone interested in doing a statistically valid survey and asking the, the council to budget for that?
I am. I, I don't understand exactly what we're, what we're asking. What do we, what do you, what do we want to, what information do we, are we hoping to get from the survey?
Yeah, to put a little bit more resolution on it, I think that this is a survey that would ask the community all manner of questions about, you know, building heights, you know, K and L street, the things that are of interest to the community that they've expressed concerns about. So that there was a statistically valid survey, one that was done in a manner that could be proven to be statistically valid, as opposed to the slide O polls that we've done, or the, the polls that, you know, the community members have done. And to, to have that be at least in part the basis for your decision. What I'll say is that, you know, the, the survey is going to, it's not going to be cheap. You know, it's going to be, you know, 50, 60, $70,000 minimum. And I think that, you know, we're going to have to work real closely with the, a firm if this moves forward to make sure that they, you know, fully understand and comprehend the, the purpose of the survey. You know, it's, you know, not just a simple matter of like bumping into the people on the street and saying, you know, hey, you know, what do you think about eight-story buildings, for example?
So I guess I know that it's expensive and certainly what my colleagues want to go with. I just have been hearing that a lot of folks don't have the capacity to get here, but they would like to weigh in. And a survey that just went to all of the residents in Arcata might be really helpful for buy-in. I don't know that people feel like they've had the opportunity. Not to say they haven't been given the opportunity, but that not everybody has the wherewithal to be here on a Tuesday night. And so it would give an opportunity for the community to be part of something that's going to affect Arcata forever.
Absolutely. And let me just be real clear, I support the idea. I think that you all should take a straw poll and decide whether you want to make that as a recommendation to the, the City Council or not.
My hesitation, are you, sorry, are you through?
Go ahead.
Yeah, my hesitation is how many hundreds of hours it's taken all of us to come up to speed with some of the nuances of this ambitious rezone and the overlays of state law, the community benefits program, and just all the kind of intricacies of the Gateway Area Plan. And to render all of that into some questions that anybody in the public could just pull out of their mailbox or wherever this thing arrives and say, oh yeah, I like this plan. Or I, you know, I, I just can't imagine. And that's why I think it is probably a very difficult survey to write and probably would be expensive because it takes so much thought to write the exact right question that assumes that the public has quite a bit of information to weigh in on. You know, as opposed to, as Mr. Loy said, you know, do you like eight-story buildings? There's just not enough information in that question, not even close. And so how do you get way, way further in before you even say, do you like eight-story buildings?
So I thought we weren't talking about what we would specifically include in a survey, but just yes or no, would this be something we'd like to further explore? I mean, it may be that it stops at City Council because it's not affordable, but we're just doing a straw poll of, is this something that we still would like to look into?
Yeah, I, I think the, the concerns that Commissioner Tagney raised are, are important and valid ones. I think that the, again, this is why developing, working with the survey, if this moves forward, we're, working with the survey team to ensure they understand the purpose of the survey will, you know, help guide how the survey is, is written. I mean, the, you know, the, you know, asking someone whether they want eight-story buildings, you know, you, you know, that, you're going to get a response to that, an initial knee-jerk response. Training people, going through a whole process that you've just described, that's an entirely other way of getting at it. But what the survey may be able to do is to say, you know, are you interested in eight-story buildings? You know, how, how important do you think housing is for unhoused community members? You know, what are the impacts to, you know, your, your daily life and, you know, transportation? You know, they could develop a series of questions that the survey team will be able to tease apart. While this person said that they're not four or eight stories, this is, you know, these are the other values. And so you'll be able to rank those values. And so if you look at the survey as a, a method where you're going to put out and ask, you know, everyone in the community, do you want eight-story buildings in the, the Beryl District, for example? And you take those results and you, as the planning commissioners, are intending to make a recommendation based on those results. The City Council are going to make a decision based on that. That's, that's not a very sensitive analysis. And I think they'd be, be able to develop something that's a lot more sensitive to that, than that and give you more information than, than just the straight-up answer to, do you want tall buildings?
We used a survey, we, we did this in, not that long ago, right? And we were really pleased with the agency that we did. We outsourced it. They did a wonderful job and it helped inform, I believe, the...
We did, we did a survey on a measure that was funding parks.
Right.
Do you want to, do you want a property tax to fund parks?
Right.
That's a way different question than the one we're dealing with here. And so, so I guess, you know, what I would say though, is that I do believe that if we move forward with a, a survey, I think that there's going to be a way to make it sensitive, sensitive enough so that the decision-makers will be able to evaluate a whole range of different values that the community has, not just the size of the buildings. You, as decision-makers, then will be tasked with the job, as you are now, survey or not, with balancing those community values and deciding, is it important enough to have taller buildings? Or is it, you know, is it more important to have smaller buildings? Do we want more public open space? Or do we want shorter buildings? Do we want to, you know, provide for more community? Or do we want to provide for less? So those are all the decisions that you're making as you work through this. This would give you another, you know, piece of information. It's not going to make your jobs any easier, but it will give you more information. So...
All right, let's hear from the other commissioners, Judith and Scott.
Yeah, as someone who's designed research and designed surveys and taught survey research methods, I, I'm thinking two things. The first is that to get general opinions of the types that we're talking to, the time to have done such a survey would probably have been long before we had a draft of a plan. The types of surveys that I, I, I think the people who suggested doing a survey have in mind are inherently biased. And I can't imagine any way that we could actually get a survey and set of responses in Arcata that wouldn't be subject to as much bias as the attendance and public comment opportunities that the planning commission and the city council and all of the outreach activities have already and will provide. One thing that a survey can be very effective at is actually to reinforce and encourage buy-in to a set of plan priorities. I don't think that's what the suggestion for this survey had in mind. And so I'm, I'm thinking that it may be possible to do a survey on very specific policies and get some useful results, but the types of sampling that a survey in Arcata could do is going to introduce yet another set of biases that may not be any more statistically valid than the opportunities for public input that we've already had. The Parks and Recs Department did what I considered a, a really successful survey a few years ago. I can't remember how many responses they got, but what they were looking for was suggestions about what the Parks and Recs Department should do. And they got some great suggestions from the public, and the public got excited about it, and the response rates were phenomenally good. But, but I don't think that's the kind of survey that we need in this particular situation. If it was, it's the kind of survey that we probably should have had two years ago, rather than now that we're sitting here with a draft plan before us. So I guess if we're straw pulling, I, I, I would say, yeah, it's really important to use a variety of different ways of getting public input. But I don't think a statistically valid survey at this point is a cost-effective way to do it. It might provide some political benefits for allowing members of the public to feel that they've had more say than they have. I think our public forums do that as well.
I agree with Judith.
Yeah. You agree with Judith, Scott?
I do, I do. I think public engagement is really important. I think there's a ton of opportunity at our meetings, as well as phone, Zoom, et cetera. And I think Judith's right that that money, that effort would have been a lot more productive before we're at the point we are now. And to do that seems like going backwards and devoting resources to get input that, I think we could use those resources better to get some more information on some of these top-tier questions that we're all facing.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. It would, it feels like it'd be moving backwards at this point. And I'm thinking, all that money could be, we, we could do a lot. We can get all kinds of experts in here. We could do all kinds of studies with that kind of money. So I'm sorry, but I think we're, we are past that point of getting a survey. So I would say no. Go ahead.
Okay.
One thing that the city of Arcata could do, and, and this may be something that the city council might want to consider at some point, would be to institute an annual survey of city policies where it could be sent out to every address in Arcata. There would, there would not necessarily be a specific vote attached to it, but it would give the city as a whole and the city council some interesting ideas for how people were seeing policies that would come up before them. I'm, I'm not sure that doing that in the context of this plan at this point would be the best use of our, our resources.
It's a good idea. I'll forward that one on.
So I would say that's a no.
Yeah. So then, next is height and shading and views. We have a whole lot that's going to happen in the Form Based Code and the design outreach that we'll be doing on the Form Based Code and the study sessions that you all have, but you feel like you need something above and beyond what's already programmed, in particular, given that the, the city council is going to be looking at expanding that scope on the 16th.
There is a SLIDO with this associated, just to let everyone know that that's open.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting the SLIDO. Thank you.
There was not a SLIDO for the last one, because it wasn't on our...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Is there going to be some kind of 3D modeling that we're able to observe when we get involved with these decisions and discussions?
We have some 3D modeling. If you recall the presentation I did in August, I think, that was recorded, there was some 3D modeling there. We'll be getting some additional, with this new scope, we'll be getting some additional site-specific, you know, design work. And then in addition, the idea for the Beryl District was to do a, a site concept, you know, kind of a campus layout concept. So there are some more visuals that, that are programmed in. There were more visuals programmed into the original scope, and then additional visuals programmed into the new scope. We are not proposing to go through the entire district and produce a model for the entire area. You know, it will be based on pure speculation. It would be very costly, and it wouldn't necessarily give a, a true representation of what the actual projects are going to be built out like, because again, you know, the, there's a lot of flexibility in the gateway area plan. Someone could come in with a, you know, two-story and go through the, the planning process, or they might come in with a four, or if it's allowable, they might come in with a six. And you're not going to have uniformity there. It'll be a, a mix of different building types. So any model we would build that was trying to replicate what the future might look like would be, you know, pure guess and speculative. So we're not, we're not proposing to do that.
I think one thing that would be really helpful would be some way of providing the commission with a variety of different California cities' successful code language with regard to shading and heights and solar access, above and beyond the one example that may appear in a draft. I know that there, there, there's a huge range of ways that different cities have dealt with that. And so having some alternatives to review, rather than simply one, one draft, in, in effect, proposed zoning code would be super, super helpful.
Yeah, I definitely want to see more on, regarding the shading, just because of where we live and, of course, what will happen. We know what's going to happen. The, the apartments or condos that have, you know, the most shade will be the ones that are affordable. And then, of course, they won't be affordable because your power bills are going to go up. So I just, I feel like that's really, really important for where we live. So I'm not kind of, not sure what kind of information we need, who we would get that information from, what kind of expert could show us that sort of thing. So I'm looking for some feedback on...
Yeah, we can, we can have the, you know, both our consultants, Ben Noble, and if we need to bring in, you know, additional architects to show that. But I'd also encourage you to go back and look at the presentation that I made that does use some of the 3D modeling. You know, it's not very eloquent, but it does get the point across as to, you know, how different setbacks can really affect the, the shading. Today was a perfect example. You could have had a 20-story building in front of your house today, and it wouldn't have mattered, because it was dark all day. We do have those days through the winters. We have short days through the winters. It's not the solar, solar gain portion of the year, but even still, we can ameliorate those. Even with existing smaller buildings, we have some shade impacts. The Plaza Point, for example, four-story building, it's built to our current standards on the, the property line. You know, shades a portion of the co-op across the street, you know, during the late fall, early, early spring. But during most of the year, it's shading only across the street. And with these setbacks and stepbacks, you'll have a situation that looks more like the Sorrel Place, where, you know, during the spring and, and fall, you're really not shading even most of the street. So I think we can, we can show that with real-life examples, examples from the, the 3D modeling. And then addition, additionally, we'll bring some, some of our experts to, to talk with you about that through the course of the, the work that we're doing.
So what else does everyone want to see on this category?
Well, we're going to, on the Form Based Code discussion, dive into this heavily. So I, I think Judith's idea of examples from other cities would be very helpful, but I can't think of anything else.
Yeah, thanks.
Scott?
Jen is, my angel is whispering in my ear, a little angel on my shoulders. Go to SLIDO, so let's make sure we look at these. In-person, open-house workshops for community members to review 3D models beyond viewing models from our screens at home. We're looking actually forward to doing that. We want to try and do some town halls that'll have more of an open format like we did with the community center earlier this year. Existing exposure to solar panels should be protected. They will be, both through state law and through our, our design guidelines. Building siting setbacks and stepbacks need to be clearly modeled for solar shading in relation to existing neighborhoods. Stepbacks. Quality of life is important. Existing homes should not be shaded. Stepbacks should start at the floors. Solar shading modeling. If the person who wrote this wants to clarify, I'm not exactly sure what stepback should start at the floors. If that means that there's a setback...
Bottom floor, maybe a bottom floor?
Yeah, the first floor is a setback. We, we can get into this more detail when we get into the Form Based Code workshops, but yes, this is included currently. More quest for solar shading, shading modeling, Form Based Code standards, and design chapter of Gateway Area Plan. Those were the staff recommendations. So I think this encompasses a lot of what we've talked about and will be included in the discussions.
So you had mentioned about having more community engagement, and I really liked what the first person said on the SLIDO poll.
Yep.
So we're going to have more robust. So even though we're not going to do a survey, we're going to dig deep to find out what the community wants with regards to Form Based Codes, and they're going to be part of that process, so that they can help design and see what they want to see in future Arcata. Great. Thank you.
I feel like I have to mention this. I live with a, with a bird head, so I would love to see some language in there with regard to how to create bird-safier buildings. And I think that should be citywide, but we might as well start with the gateway, since we have an opportunity to do that.
That sounds brilliant. Be a nuclear-free zone and a bird-safe zone. I like it.
Yeah, just, just in case you're interested, you know, the city of San Francisco has had a bird-safe zoning for years and years, and it, people just take it for granted now. So...
I'll, I'll reach out to one of my contacts there and see if I can get some info on that. Okay, parking, parking. I feel like there's going to be a lot of discussions on parking. The Form Based Code is definitely going to get into it. There's going to be information in, in the studies that we're developing for, you know, for the, the general plan, the, that will also address the gateway area plan. In terms of parking, we'll have to set parking standards for private projects. There's parking that's associated with the, you know, the public spaces. We've talked about having, you know, parking structures for nodes, where, where we could have, you know, car share, or I'm sorry, parking ride, and ways to try and keep more cars out of the, the central part of town. So there's a lot on parking already. And so the question to you is, do you want to do an additional dive, deeper dive on parking? Have either a subcommittee, you know, an additional study that's not proposed at this point? I wouldn't say that we have a, a parking, like, stress study proposed at this point. I'm not exactly sure what we would base it on, but we could probably find somebody who is willing to do that, if you're interested, but...
What does that mean, a stress study?
Uh, just to, to look at, you know, how pressurized parking is. I mean, we all, I think, go around with the, the assumption that parking is really bad when we feel like we're not finding a space as quickly as we want one. But then if you did a, you know, parking study, you might find that parking isn't really as bad as we, we think it is. And we've done that before in the city, you know, around the downtown. There's also, I'll say, a lot of work that we'll be doing to look at, you know, fee for parking, both on private and public spaces, for, for the gateway area plan, to try and, you know, offset the, you know, the alternative transportation emphasis that we've got in the plan right now. And this also ties back into some of the, you know, car share, bike share, bus pass programs that we've discussed as well. So they all kind of integrate together in, in, you know, ways. So we can, you know, certainly have more deep and broader discussions about parking in the, the course of the work here, but the question is, is there some particular study you want to do, or some, you know, if you want to set aside a task force to, or, I'm sorry, a subcommittee of the planning commission to start working on this separately?
What's the feeling here?
Well, it gets back to the previous, sorry, thank you, previous conversation that we had about what is our future transportation requirements, needs, you know, fantasies, and how we plan for that. It's hard. So I don't know. I, I don't know who we need to hear from. I, I hope that there's adequate parking and not too much, but I don't know what that looks like or who could tell us.
I might suggest that unless somebody has a strong desire at this point to say, no, we're good to go, or, you know, yes, we need a study, that maybe this is something that could evolve a little bit more naturally out of the discussions as we get into them. If we get to a point and we're like, hey, look, this is, you know, there's a big bust here. We need more, more info than we currently have, then we could ask for it then.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, me too. That's a good solution.
Okay, there was an accessibility on the list here. I guess the only thing I'll say about accessibility is that we definitely want to promote accessibility in our community. On the private side, we have, you know, standards for accessibility through the building code. And this is something that the commission could consider if we really want to, you know, go above and beyond what's required. You can consider adding some, some accessibility community benefits, so that, you know, people can select those into their projects. You know, so for example, building code requires that there be a certain amount of accessible units and a certain amount of units that are adaptable. If someone will come in and provide for a higher-than-that proportion by, you know, some, some percentage, then, you know, maybe that's something we want to encourage. We also are emphasizing accessibility in the public design, in the design of the, the roads, the streets, the crossings. And so, you know, that's definitely an emphasis for us. So again, the question is, do you want to see something above and beyond what we're planning on discussing, or do you feel like we're, we're working on it?
So having somebody in my family that is legally blind, who lived in Arcata, I personally think that we could do more. And I would love to see somebody come and speak to that, because so many of us just take it for granted, because we don't have issues. And I don't know who that would be, maybe Tri-County for Independent Living, just to talk to us about some of the things that we could incorporate. I know that there are standards, but we don't... I know that there are standards, but we don't have to do the bare minimum. We could do more and we could include that, like you said, as a community amenity.
I think through the, uh, uh, course of the work that we're doing, we, uh, you know, I, I can identify someone who could speak to this, who's already written public comment to this, uh, item. And, you know, that may be a good place to start and then potentially, uh, generate ideas about how those could be incorporated as, as community benefits. And we're, you know, standards for the city. If we want to establish a, a standard for, you know, our own practices, um, in terms of, you know, improvements, uh, you know, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I think that, you know, we have so many things, just to start with, we have so many impediments that are right in the sidewalk that make, make it difficult to get around if you can see, much less if you can't. So if that's a good starting point, I'd, I'd commit to do that.
Yes, I agree. So let's look at it.
Thank you, Jen.
Sure.
Uh, making the city more walkable, make it more accessible to people who can't drive. Uh, provide adequate ADA parking spaces, uh, don't have poles sticking out of sidewalks. We're of the same mind on that. Bunches throughout the area on sidewalks, uh, those can also be incorporated in some of these publicly accessible, private, open spaces. Uh, senior housing. Oops, where did it go? That disappeared. That was weird.
It probably got upvoted, so when people upvote things, it bounces around. That's why you're seeing it move around a lot.
Okay, let's see. Okay, stop voting, people.
And if I stop the voting, then you won't be able to see it.
Yeah, so senior housing units. Okay, so those are, I think a lot of those are already incorporated in or, or good ideas that we can talk about as we go through the community benefits program. And so we'll, we'll commit to bringing forward someone who could speak knowledgeably on this topic, um, you know, through the course of that. And that might give you some more ideas. Uh, gentrification, housing affordability. You know, we are attempting to address gentrification with a lot of different programs. There's, uh, you know, been talk about having in a, a form, um, I'm sorry, a community benefit to folks who will do, you know, for example, low-income artist housing. Um, we have programs indicated to bring back inclusionary zoning, which uh, provides for a certain amount of affordable housing. We've talked about Form Based Code, Community Benefits Program that would include, uh, additional, uh, affordable housing above what's required from the, um, Inclusionary Zoning Program and/or having, uh, affordable housing for moderate-income people or, or, you know, groups that are, uh, tend to get left out of affordable housing programs. And again, the, you know, the Grants and Housing Division, uh, you know, Jen is our resident expert on securing grants to help, you know, bring these to our community and bring the subsidies in that, uh, help, uh, implement those. You know, I think that the gentrification, housing, affordable housing balance that we'll need to, to strike, uh, does have a lot to do with what we ultimately require in those community benefits programs, um, and how expensive the cost of the housing is. There's gonna be a certain threshold beyond which market rate affordability, uh, will no longer be feasible. There'll be a threshold beyond which any kind of affordability will no longer be feasible. And so we'll have to make sure that our community benefits programs and our requirements are structured in such a way that, um, allows for the production of this housing that we desperately need. And I think that all kind of goes to, um, this, this idea. I want to say that the, the purpose of the Gateway Area Plan is to springboard on the really cool elements of the gateway, of the, I'm sorry, the Creamery District and the surrounding areas, the cool little neighborhoods, the, you know, things that have evolved over decades and try and emphasize those and provide more of that, not to take away from that. So, um, I think the intent is not to have gentrification. And then the last thing I'll say is I did, uh, put on our website a number of weeks back, if you, uh, remember looking at it and want to go take a, a look at it again, a small video blog that looked at areas and evaluated what adding new housing did to those areas, whether it in fact gentrified them or if adding new housing, uh, just provided more. Strongly encourage you to look at that. I wouldn't say it's, you know, definitive or, you know, necessarily, you know, has citations, but, um, it's some, you know, something to think about in terms of, uh, what they've seen in, in at least some communities that you can avoid gentrification. I believe that's this link right here, actually.
I'd like to suggest that, um, I, I realize that it's probably in there in the Community Benefits Program somewhere, but that we explore very explicitly. Rent stabilization policies. Not just in community benefits, but more broadly and in fact, for the city as a whole. Right now, the closest thing we have to that relates to, uh, mobile home parks. And, uh, that, that is a tool that real estate developers tend to shy away from. Claiming that that is a recipe not to expand our housing stock. I'm not so sure that's true and given the experience of so many renters in Arcata over the past couple of years, I, I think it's something that if we are seriously considering affordability, we, we need to start looking at seriously.
I think that, uh, Commissioner Mayor may have read the first Slido, um, comment. I think it's very similar to what you were just talking about.
Yeah, and that's, that's certainly, uh, something that has, you know, come up a number of times. Um, the state does have some limited rent control. Um, the city could, uh, certainly consider going further. So if the Planning Commission, you know, wants to take that as a recommendation of the plant, the council, um, we can, we can carry that forward.
I'm not in favor of rent control. I've read too many articles on it. But, um, I did want to talk about the inclusionary zoning. So when I think of inclusionary zoning, or inclusionary zoning, yeah, I think of low, like, low income, but we can make it, because there's always that, between the low and then the middle, there's always that, like, those people that, uh, get left out. So we can set our own threshold for that. Is that true?
Yeah, we can, we can create. Yeah, we can create, um, you know, the incentives for, uh, for moderate income. I have to look into, I, you know, I don't want to respond to whether the state Inclusionary Zoning Program allows us to, uh, go above 80% area median income. Um, I'll have to report back to you on that. And then the, the density bonus law is, even though the city, inclusionary zoning is something that the city can elect into, city elected into it in the early 2000s and then elected out of it in the, um, you know, 2014-ish. The city could elect back into it. The flip side of that is the density bonus law, which mirrors inclusionary zoning in a lot of ways, but it puts the control in the hands of the developer. If the developer requests density bonus, they get many of the same benefits that they would have gotten through inclusionary zoning, um, but they're, they're in the driver's seat. So that's just for edification, but yeah, we can, we can bring some more information back about the Inclusionary Zoning Program. Certainly, I think that we are more than able to add that as a community amenity, community benefit, and say, we're trying to get, you know, this kind of inclusionary zoning in our community. If you'll do this for us, then, you know, we'll, we'll incentivize your development.
So I'm wondering if we could find out more. So I understand, um, the reticence of doing a rent stabilization or rent control. And I know that we have something that's at the state level, which, um, really doesn't, is not gonna really affect the gateway because it doesn't, you know, it's not for, doesn't include older homes. It doesn't include single-house dwelling. But I think that it would be useful for us to at least find out a little bit more because we could possibly design something very unique for Arcata. It, it, you know, it could still be something we want to look at, um, and still attract developers. So I, I'm hoping that we don't rule it out, but maybe try to find somebody who can tell us a little bit more about it. I don't know very much about it at all and would like to know more.
Yeah, again, if the, uh, Planning Commission wants to make that recommendation to the City Council through this venue, you know, you certainly can. I think that the City Council has also been, you know, uh, mulling that over. Um, it's certainly a con- concern that's in the community. The city staff has, uh, done the research on prior, uh, rent control programs, um, in the city and we'd be able to do that again. We were also able to bring on special counsel to help us design it once we decided we were going forward with it for the mobile home parks. And I worked closely with our city attorney to, to draft that legislation. So we'd be able to do that if the City Council wants to see it.
Quick question. Affordable housing law controls rent, right? I mean, or somewhat solves that problem through?
Yeah, so if you have a, uh, so through inclusionary zoning or, uh, through the programs that we run, the grant programs, uh, all of that affordable housing, and we could come up with, uh, some, you know, additional programs through this Form Based Code. Um, all of those come with a regulatory agreement that restricts rent, so it's a form of rent control. It's not global. And if you have a regulatory agreement, you're generally exempt from any other rent control requirements that there are on the property. And so, um, or on, in, in the city. So for example, the city has a couple of mobile home parks that have, uh, regulatory agreements. They've done projects with the city. San Piper Mobile Home Park is one. They're not subject to the rent control provisions. They follow our regulatory agreement. So the same would be true, whether we have rent control or not globally in the city. Any, uh, new development that came through and did affordable housing using these programs that we're talking about would get a regulatory agreement and those rents would be controlled. We could do those as Commissioner, I'm sorry, as Chair, um, of State Elcock was saying, we could do those up to 120% area median income if we chose to.
I'm, I'm much more on board with that kind of scenario than rent control in general. Rent control makes me awfully nervous. Thank you.
Did we get everything we needed for that one?
I don't think we've done the, uh, proposed solution set yet for gentrification. So, uh, require all apartment developments to have a percentage of affordable units. This is, uh, the concept of inclusionary zoning. Uh, gentrification should be, uh, gentrification solutions like rent control, inclusionary zoning should be created inside, uh, citywide instead of specific to the gap. Small home villages, community land trusts, consider encouraging, uh, reduced sizes to promote affordable housing, uh, reduced lot sizes, excuse me. Uh, those are good ideas. Encourage affordable housing at different income brackets. Collaborate more with Jackie Danodaw, our, uh, friend in the Creamery District and artist community. Uh, definitely plan on doing that. Uh, affordable housing is not feasible with government subsidies, without government subsidies. How much can actually be built? That's a good question and I think that's part of the challenge of the, the Planning Commission is to balance, uh, the demands of, uh, community benefit program and standards against getting housing built. Uh, encourage an ADU infill. We already do and we will continue to. Need to investigate wide, wide variety of options for creating and maintaining affordable housing and ways to invest in them. Agreed. Allow more housing to prevent gentrification. I think that's true. There's a relationship there. And the rest of these are staff-proposed ones that you've already looked at on your, uh, spreadsheet. So I think a lot of those, uh, recommendations are, are good and should be incorporated, um, either through the, the policy that work that we're doing or as community benefits. Is there anything in particular the Planning Commission wanted to identify as additional work? Not just the run-of-the-mill work, but the additional work that we should provide here?
I'm wondering if this, um, could be a subset of the Advisory Committee that we had discussed earlier or the Working Group.
Yeah, it would kind of all go together, wouldn't it?
Okay. Impacts on the Creamery District and building. Um, all I'll say about this is, well, I guess there's a couple of different things here. One is that the Form Based Code is really, um, you know, um, it's, it's ours to create and it's yours to recommend. It's the City Council's to adopt. Can certainly do things with the Form Based Code to make sure that the Creamery Building and the Creamery District as a, as a whole is not negatively impacted. Um, in addition, we threw down a couple of things here about relocation assistance, uh, both for residences, resident and business. And then, uh, the Artist-Live Workspace. I guess this is just a tag on that, you know, we really want to emphasize that in the Creamery District. The Creamery District is really the, you know, kind of an art hub in the city of Arcata. We want to make sure the people that work there can live there.
Well, I think the first speaker would be people representing the Creamery District. Have them come in and let us pick their brain a little bit and see what, how we can meet their needs.
Would that be both businesses and residents, correct?
I was just thinking of residences, but I guess both. And we will need, they will need relocation assistance because some, there will be quite a few businesses and residents that might be displaced, displaced, at least temporarily. And it's very hard to find another place in Arcata, you know, if they live in, or work in Arcata. Good luck finding a place.
So are you suggesting a, like a study session or something like that that you'd like to see happen?
Just on the Creamery District, that seems, um, or unless we're talking about the art and design thing, but in terms of relocation, that could be in any part of the gateway.
The next item that you're gonna see on here is actually, um, David, if you scroll down a little bit, effect on businesses. So I don't know, but maybe that could be combined to a study session to kind of address both of those things. I'm just throwing it out there.
That would make sense.
I mean, it, it could be two. You know, I, I think that's, my sense is that there are several folks in the Creamery District who have, you know, reached out either independently or, you know, have provided, you know, correspondence that's, you know, in, in your list of correspondence already. That, you know, I mean, this would, this would be an open public meeting. If the Planning Commission wants to sit down and speak with residents, it would be an open public meeting and be noticed. Everyone can come. It would be, you know, recorded on Zoom, et cetera, et cetera. Many people are, um, you know, have expressed to me sort of a reticence to, uh, to come and, you know, participate in that format. And so, you know, I guess one alternative I would suggest is that, you know, we've had, you know, oodles of, of meetings at this point on this topic. Um, I can do a specific outreach to, um, addresses within the Creamery District. You know, the, the space that's properly located on there. Um, and we can have an agenda item on a Planning Commission meeting and say, hey, we're having this agenda item to talk about impacts specifically to the Creamery District. Um, you know, come one, come all. And then it's incorporated into a, uh, an actual working session of the Planning Commission, regular session of the Planning Commission. Um, and it could be that we compile a couple of these different items like, um, the, you know, that we've identified as agenda items that could be specifically discussed. And we have a couple of these that come together in one format like that as opposed to having yet one more study session that nobody may come to.
I, I'm a little confused. Are we talking specifically about the relocation issue again or?
Any, any impact of the Creamery District. So this could be based on, you know, concerns about, uh, aesthetic impacts. It could be concerns about, you know, additional people. It might be somebody who's concerned about parking. Somebody's concerned about Losavell Street. All of those things are gonna come out because they all relate to the Creamery District property.
And that'll come up on our Form Based Code specifically for that district, right?
I think it will.
Wouldn't that be the action time for this? Um, because we super would have to work out what, I mean, you know, parcel by parcel, we can decide on building heights and specifics in our Form Based Code.
You, you could if you wanted to get to that level of detail. That granularity is going to be.
If, if we're protecting a historic.
Yes, yes. If you have some specific resource that you're concerned about and you say, hey, look, you know, with the exception of this area here, you know, everyone can build the five stories because we want to, you know, whatever.
I'd like to think that the- I'd like to think that those people will show up when we're working on form-based code specific to the Creamery District, because it is, you know, there is a specific kind of aesthetic there.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm just putting this forward as an option. I mean, we could do either, if you wanted to hold a specific study session on that. I just, I feel like a lot of the people... There are several people in the Creamery District that are coming to these meetings regularly. There are many people who have expressed to me an interest, but when I invite them to the meeting, they say, "I'm not going to do that." So, you may just get, nobody show up.
That's what I would think. And when it comes to the design, they... If they could at least write a letter, or zoom in, or something.
And I can send out specific notice, you know, to those people on those agenda items, if you'd like.
The Creamery District is unique in the gateway area in that they do... There are several organizations already existing there, active. And in, to a great extent, they've been the motivation of much of this plan. And what I would like to invite some of those organizations to do is to themselves, hold a meeting, or more than one, about the gateway plan. Invite the Planning Commission to attend it. Agendaize it as a Planning Commission meeting, so that we go to their space and listen to what they have to say. We can call it whatever we want, a listening session, a reach-in rather than a reach-out. I think the important thing is that the Planning Commission is invited as guests, but that we're agendized, so that we can all be there. And see what comes of that, because, you know, the Creamery organizations, and there's several of them, are very capable of representing themselves. I can understand why they don't want to sit through one of our boring meetings. They have a way of throwing a great party that we might want to attend. And I'd love to be invited.
But how would we invite the public? And how would we televise it? And how would we do all that?
Yeah, there's some technical things that I'd have to look into. It probably would have to be a study session, and that wouldn't require the same level of detail. So, I'll... If the commission, you know, you take your straw poll, you all want to do that, I'll see if I can pull it together. Again, we'd be inviting ourselves to their house. And I don't know how... I can't promise that that's going to happen.
We'd have to invite them to invite us. And I think as far as recording and stuff like that, that their resources with access humble, and the number of other folks. And a study session can sort of skirt those issues and provide a level of informality that would allow this all to happen.
If you can arrange that, I'm pretty sure all of us will be there. I can't imagine anyone saying no. Right, Dan?
Right, I'm all for it.
Okay, and the good thing is, is that they're going to staff it, so.
Sounds fun. I'll definitely show.
Okay, I'll see what I can do. And then, I think, let's see, we have a... Move the Beryl District boundary south of Seventh Street. Keep L Street pathway park to ensure that events held at Creamery District aren't disturbed by major traffic impacts. Talk to all residents and businesses in the whole of the Creamery District. Make a new gateway district around the Creamery District. Keep building heights lower adjacent to the Creamery. The L Street Leonard Park would benefit the Creamery businesses. Monastery School should be in the discussion, too. They have been reached out to. Yes, please, planning commissioners meet at the Creamery Building and listen to what they have to say. Form-based code standards, existing gateway pla... Oh, these are the staff comments. Okay, so I will see what I can do on that, inviting ourselves to their house. Should we tell them what kind of sandwiches we like? And to Deputy Director Dart's point, are you okay wrapping in effect on businesses into this concept of impacts on Creamery District? I think some of that is going to be elucidated. We also have the relocation assistance programs and those sorts of things. Or do you want to discuss this more?
No, wrapping them in makes sense.
One more thing, I don't know where it needs to go, but this is as good a place as any. It would be great if there were some way of providing some incentives for shared workspace, shared business space in the gateway, maybe not just in the Creamery. Community benefits is only one of many ways that we could do that. But, you know, that is, again, another way of addressing gentrification, not just with regard to housing, but with regard to commercial and business rents as well.
So, perhaps that would be on the community benefits?
Could be, but there are other ways that we can do that as well. And it would be great to have some proposals. It may be something that goes in the code. It may be some policies that we add to what we've already got.
That's it?
So, are we deciding on the moving effect on businesses up?
The relocation assistance, you mean?
Well, I mean, that's area-wide. We know that's way beyond the Creamery, so I don't know.
Move relocation assistance down to where?
To effect on businesses, you said.
Because it's gateway area.
Well, I think it's in both places. So, relocation assistance is here, and relocation assistance is here. Okay, I'm going to suggest we do lightning rounds. We have only a few left. And if we do a lightning round, and then come back and talk about the items that we need to discuss in more detail, and then we will have direction. And you can change your lightning round vote. You don't have to... You don't have to stick with it. You can come back and revisit it. But fiscal impacts, I think we have discussed this, and we'll bring it back as a business item. Everyone good with that?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
No, you're not opposed, or no, you're opposed to that?
No, I'm not opposed. Yes, it's a good idea.
Okay. Tsunami storm surge. We've got a ton of information on this. The entire gateway area is outside of the tsunami storm surge area. Certainly with sea level rise, the tsunami zone will change over time. The majority of southern parts of G and H Street are in the tsunami storm surge area. It's something that we have to deal with through building design. Do you want to have something additional on this? Do you want to maybe touch on this through the LCP work we're doing, and the sea level rise work we're doing? Do you have concerns? At this point, it's outside of the tsunami storm surge zone.
But it is in the flood zone, right? So, they'll have to get...
It is not in the flood zone.
It's not in the flood zone?
It is not in the flood zone.
I feel like it fits under LCP and sea level rise stuff.
I agree with Dan.
I agree with that.
Okay. Lack of diversity in design. Everybody comfortable that you're going to get what you need out of the form-based code? Or do you want to have something special on this?
No, that... this will come later, yeah.
Okay. Construction impacts. There are going to be construction impacts. There were some concerns that, you know, when buildings are being built...
Well, there are going to be construction impacts. But there are... there always are, you know?
I'd really like to add something specific there about the timing of the infrastructure developments, in particular with regard to street and circulation design. I think I've mentioned this many times before, but it makes a difference whether things are done all at once or incrementally, and what comes first. And I think for many people, that timing is the thing that will make the difference between something being extremely disruptive, or just kind of annoying. So, I'd really like to talk about timing and scheduling and phasing expectations with regard to public infrastructure.
Yeah, I definitely think those conversations can occur through the course of the work that we're doing.
Wait a minute, I don't understand. What do you mean, public infrastructure? Construction impacts as far as public infrastructure? Like, what do you mean?
Roads, sidewalks, sewers, electrical utilities, any public park space, even publicly accessible private space, all those bits of public infrastructure, where it makes a difference if something is going to happen next year or 10 years from now, whether it's going to take three months to build it out, or whether it's going to be, you know, tearing things up for, you know, four or five years.
But won't that happen when a project...
No, because public infrastructure is stuff that is often done by the city itself. And so, I think that's something that we can speak to, and that is going to be an important part of understanding what the development of the gateway area is going to mean for the entire city.
Is that a question for Natura, then? You know, like, can he batch projects together, so that the street doesn't keep getting torn up, or something is...
Well, I think it's something that the city needs to make some policy decisions on. If a bike... If a bikeway is going to be disrupted, is it going to all move at once? Or is this block going to move this year, and that block is going to move five years from now? So, these are policy questions. And I think we need to discuss how we can frame those policies. So, yeah. And obviously, the private investment side of it is something that the city has less control over. But as far as public infrastructure, that... those are city decisions. And they're things that we should be addressing in our plan. And we don't have enough information about that yet.
I was just going to just mention that I think our engineering department does look at those things when they're looking at those projects as a whole. So, they do take that into consideration. I definitely think that that's something that we could have our engineering department come and talk to you more about. Natura definitely would be able to share kind of how they plan those. But these are things that we consider as we go through our budget process as well, and as they go through their planning process of how things are going to be diverted as far as streets and things like that. So, I'm sure they'd be happy to talk more about how that works. But they do have those plans in place.
That's absolutely terrific. And I feel it's important to get those things written out as policy statements in the gateway plan as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good discussion that the Planning Commission needs to have. I think that can happen through the course of the work that we're doing. I think to the Chair's point, we're going to absolutely have construction impacts. When projects are being built, there are going to be construction impacts. We have policies and measures currently that help limit those impacts to, you know, working hours and that sort of thing. And so, we can look at those in more detail. I don't know that... I've heard anything here today that suggests that we need a, you know, something above and beyond the work that we're doing, though.
Well, there was a recommendation that we get a presentation from the engineering department. Should that be up there?
That absolutely is part and parcel of the work that we're doing. Natura will absolutely come and discuss that with you, I think, to Deputy Director's points. Okay, and I'll just make a note of that here. Land acquisition. This, I believe, was in relation to the parks. And we have included an update based on comments from Commissioner Mayor and the Parks and Rec Committee to incorporate land acquisition as parks as part of the policy as well. So, there's both the publicly accessible, private, open space, and the policy for acquiring parkland when it's available. Do you feel like you need anything additional on this?
I don't.
I don't. I'm good.
I do not.
Okay. Design standards limiting housing production. I think this is a comment to the fact that if our form-based code standards are too stringent, they will limit housing production. Oh, thank you.
These don't have an X, so these were ones you already took off the list last time.
Oh. Gotcha. This was taken off the list last time. Thank you, and we are done. Again, I want to remind the Planning Commission, the city... And the city, folks in the city, that this is not a done deal. You can raise concerns. The Planning Commission can say, "Hey, I've been thinking about it. I want to come back and think about these things, but we need to make progress." We've made a huge amount of progress with this exercise. I know it felt a little contrived to start, but it's been able to get us to a point where we understand a lot better from a staff perspective, what we need to bring forward to the Planning Commission to continue this discussion. So, I want to thank you and honor you for that. I'd recommend that you open it up to the public for public comment, as you've been known to do in the past.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address any of these issues that we've been going over all night? You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Matt Simmons. I'm with the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. Good exercise, like you said. But I'm curious to get a count on how many more meetings this requires, right? Because we've had a lot of, "Let's come back and talk about that." And then, an updated estimate of how long it'll take to, you know, get a first draft of the code after all that, just because we desperately need this project. Thank you.
James Becker spoke to you already a couple of times tonight. Appreciate that opportunity. And then, I wanted to speak to open spaces this evening, and how it relates to precedent and future infill. The recently approved Gatewood Garden Apartment infill is an example of, not to anybody's fault here, but some bad policy which allowed 12-foot setbacks between infill structures to be counted toward cumulative community common space. Moving forward, details on open space for infill need to be clarified. Otherwise, the promise of privately-owned public spaces could possibly serve as minimum standard loopholes. I know it's a little different, but, you know, just things could fall short. There's no guarantee right now of particular parks in the gateway. Its main objective is housing production, with the hope of parks being developed. In the previous meeting discussion, L Street was prioritized as to be addressed. The L Street Leonard Park represents a guaranteed park that won't require any acquisition of land or a promise of privately-owned public spaces. It is a primary segment of the California Coastal Trail, the Great Redwood Trail, the Humboldt Bay Trail, and will be a part of Arcata's contribution to a California trans-trail network. From Alliance to Samoa, the L Street serves as the primary corridor between CHP Neighborhoods and Parks of the North, and the Martian Wildlife Sanctuary to South. A primary tenet of the gateway draft is for quality open spaces and trails to be located within 200 yards of every residential unit in the planned space. Natural features of wetlands and daylighted Jolly Giant Creek can enhance the park space. With the advent of rail banking of the line, an expanded footprint can serve as a blank slate for linear park visioning. The City of Ukiah's Great Redwood Linear Park Plan and the 2010 Rails with Trails feasibility study offers vision as passed forward. So, there's no need to reinvent the wheel on this. There's already a lot of conversation about how to move forward. I'm learning about this. You probably already had all that in mind. But for me, it offered me some insight. ArcataLinearPark.org website is dedicated to information to support the designation of the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor as a linear park. There's a gallery of corridor photos, links to information about Rails to Trails, Rails banking, linear parks, open spaces. The Ukiah's master plan, and Arcata's Rails with Trails feasibility study. feasibility study. In addition, it offers numerous links to maps from the L Street corridor, on up to interactive maps of the Great Redwood Trail and the California Coastal Trail. There's a link to the Great Redwood Trail Master Plan website, which offers timeline for the master plan development. Ultimately, L Street Linear Park can offer space for mingling, recreation, primary non-motorized corridors serving this future infill community, greater Arcata, Humboldt County, and our entire state and beyond. Thanks.
Thank you, James.
Good late evening. My name is Joanne McGary, and I was late coming here to make any comment in the beginning because I've been watching off and on and listening to what's going on in Egypt in regards to the COP27 Conference of Parties and the climate realities that they're discussing there. And anyway, I also just want to say that I can't sligo because I have an old-fashioned functional phone that I carry with me, but it doesn't have smartness to it. So I have a lot of things I could contribute to any of these topics, but I didn't have the ability to do so. So I think that's an interesting thing for you to look at when you're doing this type of technological information. It's not all of us want to or are able to contribute in that way. But getting back to the climate, you know, I just remember when this whole Gateway thing was starting, I was just sort of like blown away and amazed by its appearance in the community because I just really felt it was not something that so many of us were aware of. And by the way, I live in the Creamery District, and I'd love to invite you all over to my porch if you want to come, and we can sit and have tea and talk about the reality of a single older woman living as a tenant all her life, trying to find affordable, safe, sane places to live in our community. But I think everything that we look at really needs to start, I think the nesting of the Gateway Plan into the general plan is a really, really important thing, but then also looking at the overview of the climate reality. And sea level rise, the reports coming out of Egypt are, it's increasing faster and faster. So what was, you know, Samoa Boulevard two years ago, it's, you know, all the way up to potentially Eighth Street and stuff, if we're really kind of thinking about what the reality might be in a few years of where water will be, where we want to build housing. Anyway, I just really think the Climate Action Plan for our region and the incorporating that whole umbrella concept of looking at the global reality as we plan locally, you just can't ignore it. So I would like us to step back on occasion and look at that. Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify, oh, I just lost my, oh, well, I'll go without it. I just wanted to clarify the 2010, the PDF on the L Street, or the, I'm sorry, the bicycle, the Trails with Rails Bicycle Path that was proposed, and I kind of wanted to go back to that. In that PDF from 2010, L Street was considered to be a shared, was proposed to be a shared road, so it would just have local traffic only on L Street, and it would be shared with bicycles and pedestrians, and that whole corridor from Alliance up by the high school down to Samoa was proposed as a linear park. It had planters for a community garden, it had benches, had statues to, in, you know, in honor of the Wiat tribe in that area, proposed. They have a whole slew of stuff, so if you could look at that PDF on the 2010 operation, I forget what it was called now, but anyways, that would be great, and you can find it on Arcata, ArcataOne.com, I believe Fred has it listed there, and it's also on our website, Arcata Linear Park. And anyways, it's listed there if you go. And so, and I also, so beyond that, I also would love to see you guys come to the Creamery and talk to the Creamery folks and the whole district, and I'll talk to Jackie, and the theater there, the Playhouse Theater, would be a great opportunity. I know they have all the technical wizardry there, if they wanted to televise it, or, you know, and then, so anyways, so, yeah, thank you for bringing out, you know, reaching out to the community, the Creamery District, so thank you.
Thank you. First, my apologies. I did not mean to stir up a hornet's nest earlier, but there must be a balance between brevity and accuracy, but I understand fully what was raised. I want to congratulate staff and the Commission on your work tonight. Someone should sum up the number of hours or sessions that you just committed to. I think you might be looking at it like a year and a half of work here, unless you can do it really quickly. I have a lot of notes, and I think it'd be best to put them in writing because I have too many notes for the three minutes. Much was said tonight, of course. I want to say that on the L-K Street couplet, there is a handful of articles on the ArcataOne.com website that talk about this. Commissioner Mayor, you mentioned buses are a problem, also delivery vehicles and emergency vehicles, or emergency vehicles are the biggest problem. On the website, if you could spend a half an hour, an hour, there are transcriptions of the videos. I find, as I've mentioned before, that the transcriptions are much easier to read. I think that the presentation by Todd Tregenza is very one-sided, biased, and inaccurate. When we do have discussions on this, I request speakers to provide alternate viewpoints, not just city staff and city engineers, and also bring in Dave Ryan from the Transportation Safety Committee. Thank you for bringing up the undergrounding conversation, very important. A survey, the costs that we were quoted, or from Scott McBain, was about $18,000 to $22,000. That said, I'm in full agreement with Commissioners Tagney, Mayor Davies, probably everyone. An accurate survey is extremely difficult, but perhaps we all can come up with some questions, also using images and doing it on the internet rather than on the telephone or something. The Creamery District, I really hope that works out as you described. I would think they would be much more engaged, I would think the whole city would be much more engaged than they are. Other things I think I'll put in writing, and send them to you. I'm looking forward to getting the table of items that do not comport with the new draft plan. There is a table because it's expressed in the present tense, and I want to know when it will be published and what's going to be in it, and I'm sure we'll get to that real soon. Thanks. Thanks for the evening.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Goldammer. I'm a resident of Windsong, and also I've been a teacher in the area for, well, I'm retired now, for 30 years. When I first heard about the Gateway, I thought, of course, we need housing, and then soon, and I just pictured the undeveloped areas, okay? I didn't know until the last month that it involves basically eliminating our small mom and pop businesses along the Gay Street, K Street corridor, and if you don't think it does, then it does. I mean, Rich's Body Shop, you know? We need the services. People say, "Oh, the car wash could be gone?" I don't think people really understand, and you've had meetings, but basically, the people, everyone I talked to seems that the main issue is building heights size, but I don't, I don't know how you get the information out there, and I don't know how much you listen to the public. And so if you don't want to survey, and I don't know, when you talked about putting the cart before the horse, yeah, that survey should have been done a long time ago, and I don't know what or if any backup policies can be created. I went to a meeting in which someone with the city was kind of saying, "But it's so sad that people would want us to change after all the work we've put into this." You know, well, change happens. I went into the planning department, and one of the people said, "Well, the world's changing, so we have to." Well, maybe some of the planning has to change, too. Maybe it's not just a public, what people are thinking, maybe we don't have to be the only ones that change. I just am worried about, I'm worried about, even though you're saying it against gentrification, to eliminate our services, that's gentrification. And I, in Windsong, am I timed up? No. In Windsong, it's high density, and then little by little, the developers started building bigger houses, but then the city stepped in, seems to have bought up some of the properties and made it into these duplexes. It's a funny little community because it actually has developed into a nice family neighborhood, and I think that that might be a place to look to rather than just high-rises. Thanks.
Is there anyone online?
I'm not seeing any hands at the moment. If you're online and you're wishing to speak, can you please raise your hand? Not seeing any.
All right, so I'm not going to let you come up a second time. I'm sorry. So we're going to move on to business items, which consider cancellation of meeting dates in November and December.
Yeah, just real briefly, the meeting dates, second meeting dates in November, December fall on holiday weeks. They don't fall on holidays. I assume that the Commission will want to discuss, as we did put out a poll for alternative meeting dates for the meeting in November, and landed on the 15th, next Tuesday, as a special meeting date. So if you want to officially cancel your meeting and set the 15th as your meeting date, that meeting would be from 4 to 7.
Yep, 4 to 7.
Do you need a motion on that?
I need a motion.
Um, you could do a motion if you want.
I move that we have November, late November meeting on November 15.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll let Christian know, she's not here. And then what about December? I think we can only have one meeting in December, is that what's going?
Yeah, so the December meeting, you're likely going to want to cancel. It's on the holiday week, and the poll that I put out to try and find dates that everyone could meet, I couldn't find any in December that would even, I think, have a quorum of y'all. So unless you want to, you know, rochambeau for it right now, or figure out a way to pick a date in December, we only have one scheduled now.
The 13th.
The 13th.
Yeah.
So, someone make a, make a motion to cancel the second meeting? Right, what date is that?
Yeah, the 27th. I move that we cancel the December 27th meeting.
Okay, second? Somebody have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right, is there any other business items, David?
Uh, no, I guess I do want to mention that we will be reaching out to try and schedule some of the Form-Based Code workshops that'll be held as Planning Commission study sessions and trying to set dates for that. We've got a couple lined up based on our existing scope of work, and so we're going to continue that. That will likely happen sometime in either December or January, so trying to schedule those out.
You didn't mean December.
Potentially December. These would be weekend meetings, so I, the Zoom schedule, or the schedule that I sent out on Doodle was only for weekday meetings for, you know, kind of a special meeting, and so these workshops will be four-hour workshops, will be held on Saturday, and we'll try and pick some dates either in December or January if we need to push out into February. And then, you know, lastly, from, you know, in case you don't know, it's polling day, it's voting day, so happy voting day, everyone.
Any correspondence or communications? Oh, I did want to bring up one thing. I guess I don't need to do this, but, so I wanted to talk about, are there any established procedures that we as the Planning Commission have regarding site visits? And they're not, possibly not adhering to Meeting Act and avoiding the appearance that they may have gained information unavailable to the public? I have this whole thing written out. Do we have any local guidelines? Like, should we not talk to the developer, accept a tour, or be influenced by others? I mean, are there any official guidelines we have towards site visits? I can't believe I'm just thinking to ask about this now, but do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the, so I will briefly say a few things, and then I'd be happy to agendize this for a meeting in December, where we could have a more lengthy discussion about it. In general, we discourage the Planning Commission from having any ex parte communication or developing any information outside of the public hearing process. That you all don't live in a bubble. You bump into people in the market, you, you know, see people at the farmer's market, and so we recognize that that may happen, and so the idea is that you disclose those through ex parte communications. Certainly while you're having those ex parte communications, whether they're with the developer, or someone opposed to the project, or just someone in general, you need to be mindful of what the appearances are and whether or not you are creating a bias. Part of what you are charged with doing, in particular for a quasi-judicial decision, issuing a permit, is to, to hold the public trust and share your thoughts, the information that you're learning, you're making all the decisions based on the information that's being had in the meeting, so that everyone has access to it, including, you know, the opposition, the developer, the opponents, the people who, you know, are just interested. So in general, yeah, you want to try and not have ex parte, but, you know, we have a long practice, so we don't want you to live in a bubble. If you want to go take a look at a site and try and get a better understanding about how it would work if Project X, Y, or Z were implemented, and then as long as you bring that into the discussions, the deliberations, you disclose those as ex parte, that's fine.
That makes sense, okay. It just came up in my world, so I thought I'd ask about it. So is there anybody else that has any correspondence or communications that they want to talk about, or are we ready to go home?
All right.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.